I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands united nations under our god, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, so this is Monday, August 8th. Do I have the right date?
Yes.
Gosh, let's start at time. Selectmen's meeting, and I just have one item to cover under Chairman's update. I just want to remind everybody that the farmers market that's been taking place in Westwood for the past four years or so is still going on every Tuesday from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's located behind St. Margaret Mary's on High Street, so you might see signs for it, and we really want to encourage everyone, if they have time during those hours, to stop by every Tuesday. The vendors include a bakery, seafood truck, and a couple of fresh produce stands, and I really hope the community can support this so we can keep it going. It's been a nice asset for the town, and we hope that it'll come back again year after year. Thank you. I would like to grant permission to Westcat to videotape the meeting. Is there anyone else who would like to record the meeting? Okay, so let's go on to scheduled action. Our first agenda item is a discussion of University Station. Okay. We're gonna have somebody participate by phone. We have a request before us tonight from University Station developer to amend the development agreement that exists between the developer and the town, and we are being asked to release a portion of the obligations in the development agreement. And I, we have with us Dan Bailey, who's Town Council for, Special Counsel to the Town and to the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen and Planning Board on University Station. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Dan.
Dan, Nora, we're just starting.
Dan, I'm gonna turn it over to you and give us an overview and hit some of the highlights of what we're being asked to do this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to turn these on?
No.
What you're being asked to do is to sign four different documents that relate to a sale of Phase 1 of the University Station development. That Phase 1 being, and I've got the plan, I'll point that out in a minute, but let me summarize first, being predominantly the retail and the standalone restaurants. The buyer is a company called American Realty Advisors out of Los Angeles. They're a property investor. They will just hold the asset. Westwood Marketplace Holdings, which is the local entity run by New England Development, will continue in place to manage the investment. In addition, Westwood Marketplace Holdings in Phase 2, which is the entity, again, controlled by New England Development, will continue to own Phase 2 of the development. What you're being asked to do, in a nutshell, here today, is to release the buyer from any and all development agreement obligations. If you remember, the development agreement runs with the land, so it attaches to every successive purchaser. We had some exceptions to that written into the development agreement, but this isn't one of them. So in order for them to buy without having, being responsible for development agreement obligations, they need a release from you. There are two development agreement obligations that the purchaser will still be subject to. Let me go to the plan on this. And just to, I don't know what the best way to do this so people can see, just to orient you, and this is not the greatest plan on earth, but subdivision plan. This is University Avenue down here. Okay.
It's in the middle.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah. Here's University, see, I'm not even oriented. Here's University Avenue, intersection with Canton Street. Rosemont Road is down here on Lukeville Drive. The Phase 1 land is what's shown in yellow, and we can start, you know, this is, you know, the central retail, this is wait, it's right here. This is the south end of the retail, you know, Not Your Average Joe's, Bonefish, Not Your Average Joe's. This corner where there will be a restaurant at some point. This section here is all open space, that drainage area. This is another small area of retail, we've got Starbucks and the pizza place. And then the thing that I think we'll probably talk most about as part of Phase 1 is this section, Lot B1. That's where the town rights are not being released. The town has an option to acquire that piece of land for intersection purposes. If, when the redesign of the Canton Street, University Avenue intersection in connection with the slip ramp, when that's done, if the town is dissatisfied with that for any reason, it has the right to direct the owner to transfer Lot B1 to the town. The other thing that is on Lot B1 is the planning board required, back when this was all getting permitted and was memorialized in the development agreement, that there be a pedestrian path connecting Harvard Street with Canton Street over this parcel when it gets developed. So they're gonna, they're obligated to reserve land for that pedestrian path. If you're at all familiar with this, and I think people, you know, I know Michael, you're very familiar with it, this is a very challenging piece of land. We've had a number of development proposals over the years. I think Mike's more familiar with it than I am, but at one point there was a commercial development approved there, but nothing's ever gone forward because you get some very significant grade changes. So what's shown in red here, which is, this is up at the top of the hill, what has always been slated for office development, parcel C1, that being retained by the New England Development team, as is the village down here. This is wrong, okay? We did confirm that the hotel is gone.
Sold, as is gone.
Yes, it's sold, yeah. There were conflicting property descriptions. So this is the hotel, and that's been sold. So here's the village area that we've been talking about. So what the New England Development team will continue to have after the sale is the village and the potential office at the home on the top of the hill. All of the documents that you have, there's an amendment of the development agreement, there's a, what's called a letter agreement, it's basically a side letter affirming with Westwood Marketplace Holdings and Phase 2 LLC, the two remaining New England Development entities, that they are subject to the development agreement, all of those obligations except the two related to Lot B1. There's an estoppel certificate, and the development agreement requires that the town execute the estoppel certificates when requested. It's a very typical transaction document that says that your contract party is not in violation of any terms of the contract. And there is something, oh, there's another, that's the other thing. There's an estoppel certificate for this parcel, okay, which has always been, it's a corner of White Wood Avenue, there's White Wood Road here, Lukeville Drive and University. There's a restrictive covenant on that property requiring, excuse me, that the 1.6 acres closest to the neighborhood be used for residential purposes and the remainder be used for open space, so it's, you know, where they park and their drainages. You've been asked to execute an estoppel certificate that says that the owner is in compliance with the terms of that. Jeff, Ben, and I went over there the other day, walked around, we're satisfied that they're in compliance. There's no residential house here yet. Actually, called the owner, the New England Development sold that to a local owner, I called him and left a message today asking, because people in the neighborhood have been asking, when's that gonna get built? Because the idea there was that it would be a single-family residence, and it'd be a little bit of a buffer to the, to the development.
But the buyer wasn't under any obligation to do it at any timeframe?
No.
Okay. So Dan, the parcel in the upper left-hand corner.
B1.
The obligation that remains in effect says that our option, the town's option, is valid for 15 years after the issuance of the first building permit outside of Phase 1. So is that clock started yet, or no?
That's a good question. It depends on how you define Phase 1. If lifetime, which was permitted outside of Phase 1, it wasn't part of the master development plan, lifetime being right here, that was the first building permit out, then we've got 13 years left, but, you know, Phase 1 isn't defined in these documents, lifetime was really part of the Phase 1 development.
Wasn't the intent of the timeline, the 15 years, to see how much traffic really impacted this area so that if we needed to act, we had access to that parcel to do so, if we needed to do any additional design?
Well, that makes sense, that's not what the document really says. What it says is that when Maston completes its design of the slip ramp and the Canton and University Street intersection, if we're not happy with it, we can ask for that land to be used to mitigate the impacts of that design. Now, how would it play out in practical terms? What we would say is, look, we don't want it now, we wanna see what's going to happen, but we probably have to amend the agreement.
15 years?
Yeah.
Okay, so how are we gonna come up with what that timeline really is?
What do you think?
Well, my sense is, John Chuett, for the record.
Thank you.
Phase 1, and it is defined in a couple of different places, including our Section 61 permit, which talks about the 600,000 square feet of development. I think there are two positions one could take, that the lifetime fitness was outside technical Phase 1, because we brought that back and had a separate review, so it was triggered when it was that. The second, if you wanna be the most conservative and add to the timeframe, I would say down truly in Phase 2, without question, would be the hotel building permit. I think the hotel building permit would trigger, I think either one is a valid position to take.
I'd like to take a position on it now, so we aren't questioning it five years from now, when our memories get a little more cloudy?
And we can add this to whatever. I think the clearest view is that the issuance of down in the village, which was clearly a phase 2, and Dan, if you care, you get the building permit for the hotel, it starts the clock, and that gives you the maximum amount of time.
And that occurred weeks ago, months ago?
Yeah, probably, I don't know, fall.
Couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago, right. Yeah. So that, because that's also, this is done now, and it's operating, and this is close in time as to those two things.
I'd love this to be documented.
It will be.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
Nora, is the building permit been issued?
It has, yes, it has been issued, I don't know exactly when it began to launch.
But we're in real time. I just don't wanna have people down the road who weren't involved long enough to make, try to figure it out when it wasn't all...
Completely agree. You've got the two people that drafted it saying that there are two different interpretations, so...
I think we just got an agreement on...
Yes, we did.
...the HUT. That works for me. Okay, any questions?
So Dan, what are we losing by agreeing to this? What is the town losing?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No. You're in the exact same position agreeing to this.
If WH, WRMH, so...
Exactly. They're stepping into the shoes of the current owner. You know, one could say maybe you're losing a little bit of leverage, you know, with respect to that parcel, you know, because New England Development won't own it when we're talking with them about Phase 2 mitigation.
But the terms stay the same?
Terms stay exactly the same.
I guess, Dan, for purposes of the public and what we're talking about, not looking for a lot of detail, but when we say we're releasing the buyer from obligations that run with the land, could you just say what they are?
And there's a, the documentation to that effect, and it's probably easiest for me to stand up and talk about. There's a obligation, you know, there's a broad obligation to operate and maintain the facilities at the first-class shopping center. That actually is a condition of the permits and approvals as well, so the owners are gonna be subject to that. There's an obligation, and we documented all this in a side letter that they signed, but to replace street trees that...
Replace what, elder trees?
Street trees. There are a number of trees in landscaping along, you know, some along Harvard, some along Rosemont, and a number along University Avenue. There are some streetlights that need to be replaced. There are obligations, for example, and, you know, this group would be subject to it anyway, but before they can come in with an application for any residential uses in Phase 2, they have to do a report evaluating the impacts of the residential uses in Phase 1. Those, you know, we really wanna get down in the weeds if we ever had an issue with counting the 220 units in the first phase of residential as affordable, because you never know if DHCD is gonna truly approve it, or some third party can come along and challenge it. They have an obligation to indemnify us for up to $500,000 in legal fees if we had to fight that battle. That's maybe the biggest financial thing left.
So as far as O&M and the street trees and the lights and everything, we're saying New England Development will assume responsibility for that.
That's correct. And, you know, one of the questions I had is, you've got O&M law obligations, you've got different obligations on somebody else's property, and this is not uncommon in these big shopping centers, there are reciprocal easement agreements like this all the time. But rather than dig into those myself, what I asked for, I sort of put on, I pretended I was a bank lawyer, and I said, give me an opinion, you know, from Ghoul Student Stores that says you've got all the necessary rights, and they gave us that opinion.
And I just wanna be clear, so the buyer's representatives are here, they agree with that, Matt?
The buyer's represent, not aware of any buyer's representatives.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just the sellers.
Oh, okay.
Speaking of the buyers, and I see that it's saying that New England Development will continue to manage the properties, so the investor is just a passive investor?
Yeah, this is, I mean, not uncommon, and Dan reflected, years ago you'd go out and you'd get your permanent financing, and the permanent financing would place the loan that we have and get it turned directly back. Today, there are these investor groups where we're required to continue to manage, participate in, and act just as an owner. They come in using big insurance company money, they take and pay off our construction loan, they return a portion of the equity to us, they require us to continue on with the development. We have obligations to continue to develop Phase 2, to manage...
But you've liquidated the ownership position that New England Development has in it? It's just a fee situation?
As to Phase 1.
As to Phase 1.
That we do, that we remain on. For example, we had already sold, you know, the Target piece, they ended up with it as the Gables piece.
The yellow.
The yellow. So as for the retail, and they are truly very passive investors, they, they take large insurance company money to return developers' equity dollars, and then, I mean, they're classically called coupon cutters. They just, actually, we're responsible for taking in the money and giving it back to them.
All the leasing resides with New England Development.
We're responsible for all the leasing, everything.
All the headaches reside with New England Development.
That is the deal.
So replacing Sports Authority on you.
That's where I said the headaches. And the town interfaces with who on yellow properties? When it comes down to the upper parcel, 11 acres, it sounds like we interface with the new owner.
Well, because we continue to manage, operate, and be responsible for all ownership obligations, the thing that the town will see is you will change the address of, no, they actually wouldn't even see the change of address of tax bill, because we actually have to do the tax bill too. So it's not a whole lot you're gonna see that's different.
Different than the days when I was with an equity investment firm.
It's a total, I mean, these deals, I didn't tell them, I mean, these deals didn't exist, I mean, we started, now that's, this is the commonplace.
So they don't even have asset managers?
They have asset managers, but they, onsite, no. They don't, they don't put anybody onsite, they don't do anything. It's a very different model than what it was before.
Okay. What else do we need to know, Dan?
The only other thing you need to know, and it isn't related to this particular transaction, but there's a fifth document that you have to sign, and that is a termination of easements. This is one I am very glad to see signed, because it's a termination, you'll remember, we had the temporary bypass easement, that sat there for a long time. So that passes over in here, and it comes back, so we're terminating that easement.
That's housekeeping and...
Housekeeping, complete housekeeping.
Lawyer in terms?
Yeah. But, yeah, that one, as I was saying earlier, that was one of the things on the first go round that kept me up at night.
Anybody else have questions before I start having them walk us through it? Dan, why don't you walk us through each document, tell us what we're signing, and we'll do, I guess, individual motions, is that the best?
Yeah, and I left that sitting on my desk, unfortunately, but I remember what it said. The first document, which, there are two copies, and the way that these are set up, documents that are between just the town and the developer, there are two copies. Deal documents, there are four copies, because the bank, the buyer, investor will have to get one too. So the first one is just what it says, it's an amendment to the development agreement, and all it does is amend the development agreement to release the buyer, you know, along the lines that I just talked about, and make clear that the buyer still has the obligations for the option parcel and reserving the land.
Okay. So how should we do this before we sign? What should the motion be? You can tell us the motion and we'll move it, right?
Correct. Move to approve amendment of development agreement.
As presented?
As presented, yeah.
As presented and written?
As presented and written, yeah.
Okay. Right? Approved and signed.
Approved and signed, yes.
As written and documented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, none?
Do we wanna do all the signatures at once, though?
Yeah.
Do the motions first?
No, not without a new blue pen, it's not right.
Yeah, for you, fantastic, send you my blue pen.
I think we could share down here.
The next document is an estoppel certificate, there are four of these for you to sign. Again, as we talked earlier, what the estoppel certificate says, in so many words, is that they are in compliance with the terms of the development agreement.
Okay, so I move that we approve and sign the estoppel certificate as presented and written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, none?
The next document is titled Letter Agreement, and by the way, please don't date any of these documents, we'll coordinate all of that with the signing package.
So they don't proceed August 8?
They will not proceed August 8, and some of them may be notarized, so that's, anyway, this is a letter agreement between the developer and the town. This just reiterates really what is in the amendment of the development agreement, but goes into a little bit more detail with respect to the obligations of New England Development as the owner of Phase 2 on maintenance, operation, et cetera. So on this one, it would be a motion to sign and approve letter agreement.
Which outlines the obligations between the developer and the town?
Yes.
As amended?
As amended.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, none?
The last deal document is another estoppel certificate. This is an estoppel certificate stating that the owner, developer, is not in violation of the terms of the restrictive covenants, so the motion would be to sign, to approve and sign an estoppel certificate regarding restrictive covenants.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none? Christina, you...
The last document is titled Termination and Release of Easements. This is not related directly to the deal, but is instead, this is actually something we've been, it's been kicking around for a couple of months, and this is as good a time as any to get it done, and it just terminates the town's temporary easement over that bypass road, which is now part of the parking lockdown there. So the motion would be to approve and sign a termination and release of easements.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none?
And Tom, the only one that needs to be notarized is the easement. I've got some...
So this all came down kinda quickly at the last minute, is there anything else percolating we need to know about, or is... You woke us up during the summer, I have to say. At least, at least Mr. Bailey had a bit of a jolt, I think we all did.
No, I mean, I think the things that are going on, I think the restaurant piece on the floor, and that we're gonna be presenting an updated master development plan to the village area.
When will that happen?
Paul, I think your goal, the goal is to file by the end of the month, and I think they have coming for staff review, kind of a draft, any reasonable plan, start to work with staff on the kind of building management and a couple of things. When last we met, it was requested that we not do the final version until staff gave some additional input, so that's...
Nora, is that your understanding, could you hear?
That is, yes, well, I'm just waiting, have we not read into that draft version, and we have to review it and give our comments, or the official document that's filed.
So nothing else that we need to know? Please make sure those plans get in.
It's all, all we're working on. Except we continue to work on tenants.
That's good, too.
Mr. Bailey, you're free, I think, Dave.
Yes, it is. Stop.
Mr. Bailey?
No, no, it's...
Come here.
Don't touch him.
If you do that, we'll get kids, right?
Sorry, just, that was a couple of tabs. Something's... What's happening at Third Number, right here?
Three R D L, what's that?
Shouldn't be. So this one has five slots, and there was only three of us.
You don't want five.
No. You don't. Mr. Lee's day?
No, no, it's okay.
Come here.
Don't touch him.
If you do that, we'll get kids, right?
That was a couple of tabs. What's happening at third number right now?
Three R D L per time.
So this one has five slots, and there was only three of us.
You don't want five.
No.
People are watching the Olympics and now that's...
You think?
My kids watched last month for about two seconds. This is the worm, sure.
It doesn't get any better as they get older either. This one's all right now. Just have to stop.
You need to sit back?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'd give you a second, sir. Here you go, Christine.
Thank you.
Should you use those right side?
Who?
Actually, you guys are right.
Okay. Dan, anything else?
No.
You're good? Okay.
Good.
You have your closing.
Yeah, the ones, the last, one last set.
Yeah, the one Tom has to notarize.
Notarize, yeah.
All right.
The last set.
I just want to start the conversation on the next agenda. I just, we've got some people waiting. Good to see you all. You don't have to stay for the rest of the fun, Christine.
As much as we'd love to.
Nancy, you missed one.
Send it back.
The last.
I'm going to take one item out of order after I sign this document. We'll handle a couple of appointments that we have.
John, last one.
Okay. You're still signing, Jim, I'm going to join. Okay, so we have two people to appoint to the council or...
Council on Aging.
Council on Aging and Board of Directors?
Yeah, he needs to.
Hi, Mr. Hickey, Mr. Well, you're free, actually, D, on signing the termination or release of easements.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Two people we have who are interested in becoming members of the Council on Aging Board. We have Joseph A. Jowdy, who many of us know from her long term on the Westwood School Committee.
Do you want me to?
And she's also one of the founding members of the Westwood Food Pantry. Mike, I understand you met with Joseph A. You and Lena met with Joseph A.?
She's excited about joining us and sees a role for her to play as tying the school committee and the COA together and having more interaction among the student population and the senior population.
Any questions of Mike?
No, I can handle Joseph A. well.
Why don't we have a motion?
Move that we approve Joseph A. Jowdy to the Council on Aging.
Will it be for your term? Mike, three years expire in 2019?
Yes.
June 30th, 2019.
June 30th, 2019.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay, and we have Hillary Kohler. Hi, Hillary, nice to see you. It's been a while. Hillary is interested in also joining the Council on Aging Board. Mike, do you want to say anything? I know Hillary's here.
Come on, Hillary, please. So Lena and I met with Hillary. Yes, please.
The hot seat.
She is a very dynamic individual. She and her family have participated in a lot of international work, and she is very much encouraged to come in here and working with the seniors. I'll let her speak about what it is she'd like to do for you or us, but we were thrilled to see her as a candidate.
So you initiated this?
No, actually, I did talk, it was approached, and it suggested that I consider serving. And in retrospect, it was, it's kind of something that's perhaps been silently in the works for a while. I used to work with the elderly when I first graduated from college, and with a lot of things, everything kind of gets put on the side or on the backboard or while your kids are growing up and so on. And now that our daughter is kind of fledgling, if I may, I have a little bit more time to kind of get back to my core interests and so forth. And at the same time, I've kind of developed a very close relationship with an elderly woman and kind of seen her challenges that she faces on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis. So kind of when you take those couple of things and you pair it with, I was kind of very fortunate in that I had some very profound intergenerational relationships as a kid. So kind of seeing all those together and then the kind of serendipity kind of came and somebody suggested it, so I just kind of fell together.
It's a nice group.
Yeah, great.
Any questions?
No, I would just say your email was, was great.
Oh, thank you.
Happy to have read it, and I thank you for stepping up, and I wish you the best.
Well, thank you very much. Motion?
Yes, I move that we approve Hillary Kohler as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire on June 30th, 2019.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Thanks for coming in. It's good to see you. Glad you are doing it.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Good evening, everyone.
All right, our next item on the agenda, we're also going to take a couple of things out of order again. We're going to hold you on traffic rules, tie it all into your presentation, if that's okay. So tonight we will be hearing from three different areas of town government. The administrative arm, Department of Public Works, and the Police Department. And Mike, maybe you can just make a few comments of introduction to the whole evening, and then we'll go into the administration presentation.
So we're going to shift that up, the organizational chart. So the organizational chart that we presented here gives us a visual understanding of town governance, but from the registry board of town governance. On the right-hand side is the board of selectmen, on the left-hand side is just moderator and school committee, elected boards and officials are in between. And what we're going to do over the next few meetings is focus on municipal government with the guys that are board of selectmen, and how the town operates on the municipal side. And so highlighting in yellow are the departments that are going to be presenting tonight. The next meeting, everyone but community and economic development will be presented. I'm saying this out loud for you, and I'm saying it out loud for the presenters. We are going to keep this short and sweet, your, the volume here, paperwork, it's significant for women who saw it very quickly, people, and we're going to highlight the information. So the first aspect of it is administration of town government, and we're basically focused here on the chief executive officer and the chief administrative officers of town government, and the support services within the administrative side of things. So this is the board of selectmen, town administrator, town council, procurement, human resources, and IT, and the town clerk. The town...
Oh, sorry.
So I'm just going to go through the selectmen's office first. Selectmen's office is comprised of the town administrator and four other full-time, three other full-time staff members and support, a support staff person part-time. The mission of the administration, the basic mission is to provide policy and guidance for the general welfare, safety of the Westwood community. It's also there to ensure that the municipal resources are being used wisely, efficiently, efficiently, and to the maximum benefit of the community. And finally, our role is in the administration to provide a forum and information to the community so we have wide engagement and broad decisions made for the benefit of the community. We're serving the benefit of the community in general. Areas of services, I won't go through them all here, just some of them. Administrative day-to-day operations of town affairs. Whenever major issues occur, the board of selectmen gets a report. We, as the board and myself and the administrator, establish the annual goals for the fiscal year and the warrant to town meeting, which is similar to the goals. It's what we want to accomplish. We supervise and direct and coordinate all services on the municipal side of government under the board of selectmen. And finally, we represent the best interest of the community, its residents and its businesses. Our recent accomplishments, the most important one was in the room tonight. University Park was developed in the last couple of years. We are very much encouraging economic development to occur. We have secured funding for the Dedham Street corridor and slip ramp and the E Street Bridge, two major public works projects that need to occur, one for economic development and the other one for safety of the community. We negotiated, we got the Girl Scout House cleared away and under construction and relocated so we could build the police station, which was approved this past year. We transitioned to the GIC health coverage and reduced our healthcare costs. We got police and fire out of civil service so we can hire more effectively and efficiently. And finally, we consolidated land use departments in the community and economic development. Well, there's some of the issues that we're confronting this year currently. One, our phone system needs to be replaced. We purchased what we thought, what we believed, what we know to have been a good and effective and efficient phone system some years ago. Unfortunately, it got brought out a couple of times now, and the phone system we're left with is not functioning the way we have intended it to. So we are renegotiating to get out of that contract and into a new contract, which will mirror the old contract we've got. We're looking to establish an online document management system. It's something that's been on, it works for several years, and we're in the final stages of it, and I believe that Donna will say a few words more about it. We need to formally negotiate all of our municipal labor contracts. We're well on the way, but that needs to be done. We have set in motion redevelopment of Islington Center, and we've done so with extensive public input into the process, which we will continue to encourage in the fall. We need to complete the fire station and police headquarters in the next year, and finally, encourage and continue the completion of University Station. Moving on to town council services. Town council provides legal advice and opinions on the conduct and development and administration of public policy and public service, and assists the engagement of special counsel to handle more technical legal matters. Areas of services to the community are interpreting, instituting law, general law, charter, bylaws, and refers, or writes opinions for issues such as ethical, ethical issues for our officials. He reviews all time meeting language and reviews and enforces legal matters improvement, planning board decisions, legislation, contracts, open meeting law, and ethics. Related issues of this past year, he's advised the board of selectmen and elected officials on open meeting law and ethics, negotiated purchase agreements for the sale of land, both on Manhattan Street and the Girl Scout House, reviewed all time meeting articles and reviewed and signed all contracts that were formed. Issues and challenges going forward, continuing regular hours in town hall, working with special counsel to advise on legal matters, monitoring changes to contracts for various construction projects, mainly the police and fire station construction. Procure, assisting with procurement to ensure contract compliance. Special counsel will be engaged to help us with that telecommunications contract we need, continue to provide legal opinion on University Station and the issuance of alcohol devils license. Finalized, labor council will help with multi-year contract with collective bargaining, and the treasurer will continue to work with special counsel, tax title and forecourt. Finally, under my section of this report, is procurement. That's the internal organization that's responsible for making sure that we purchase our goods and services in accordance with master and law and the town bylaw, and develops contracts and formats for ensuring that we have publicly bid processes. She does the day-to-day and long-term strategy for procurement. She acts as...
She is?
She is the...
Lee.
Michelle.
Michelle Miller F., who's the purchasing agent. She ensures contract compliance for the town, school, and library contracts. She develops competitive procurement for anything, any purchase of service or goods over ten, $10,000. She develops strategies to consolidate town and school procurement purchases, which is something new as of this past year. She writes all invitations to bid and all requests for proposal. And finally, she manages the townwide procurement cap, which we added in place of credit cap. Recent accomplishments is $6 million in contracts, participating in the public safety bid, competitive bidding process. She manages the police headquarters, competition and contract process. And this year, she established an online contract management system, which eliminated the need to hire engineering firms or to pay for public bid documents. Going forward, she's building a procurement function on a new townwide, on a new townwide web system. She continues to build relationships with the school department, continues to work with project managers for the fire and police station contracts to change orders and contract compliance are adhered to. And finally, she's developing templates for the request for proposal, proposals and...
Information for bids.
Information for bids.
Information for bids. So that's it for town administration. On my, on what I was reporting, and we'll turn it over to the town clerk for hers.
Hello, Daddy Powers. Nice to see you.
Thank you for having me here. Selectman Hyde and...
Walsh.
I'm Hickey. My office consists of myself full-time, and I have an assistant town clerk, election officers who vary, depending on how many elections we have in one year, it could be 24 to 30, and then we have a summer intern. It's a mission of the town clerk to serve the public by serving as a keeper of records and conducting the democratic election and town meeting processes. The office of the town clerk is compared to a hub around which the wheel of local government revolves. The office has more frequent contact with the public than any other office in town government. Residents, employees, and the general public rely on receiving accurate information and prompt service on a daily basis. The office of the town clerk is one of the oldest in municipal government. So there are many areas of service that the town clerk is responsible for. You have a lot of the description in your packets, but some of the major areas are elections. Elections are very important, and the administration of elections, it starts from getting the staff, ballots, testing machines, having the right equipment, and having the results sent to the state, and that is a very important role of the clerk. Town meetings is another important role of the town clerk. Without the town clerk's preparation, town meeting can't really begin, and the work doesn't end with preparing for town meeting and holding town meeting, but also after town meeting, sending all the required reports to the attorney general so that any legislation that has been approved is approved. so that any legislation that has been approved is approved by the attorney general. Also, vital records is another big component. We register all births, deaths, and marriages for Westwood residents. They also have to be archived properly because these records we want to last forever. Voter registration is another important area. There's been a lot of new changes in voter registration just this past year with the new election law. One of them is online voter registration, which has made it easier for people rather than coming in. We also have August first, we just had a preregistration for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. So they can preregister a vote and that is kept in a queue. And when it comes time for them to turn eighteen, they will get a notice that they are now registered. And census is another big area. So census is done annually. And the census, what the census does is it lets our public safety, we work on a jury list for the, from the census, just to ensure who's living in what homes in Westwood. And it's also a way to have registered voters listed in the street listing. Another area is the charter and bylaws. So I did start a project, when I first started, many years ago with general code, and that was to codify our bylaws. So now, moving forward, every year, once we have our fall town meeting and our annual town meeting, the bylaws, any new legislation is codified. And once it's approved by the attorney general, the E-code is updated. So, you know, we, every year, our information is very up to date, very easily to search, not only for our community, but others that want to look and see what kind of type of bylaws we have. Another area is keeper of records. So we have an abundance of records, which we keep in our office, that are permanent records. Ethics is another area. I'm actually the ethics liaison. So I'm, I work to ensure that our municipality, our employees and any board and committee members are, take the ethics test once every two years and every year they have to receive a summary. So we keep up with that. Open meeting law compliance is another area. So we have to ensure that meetings are posted in a timely fashion according to the open meeting law guidelines. Minutes are done correctly. And the next thing is town permit files. So permits would be raffle permits, things of that nature. Those, we don't have too many of those, but we do, do a couple of those a year. Oath of office, people come in that have been appointed to board and committees to be sworn in. And also justice of the peace services, that if somebody wants to get married at town hall, that's a service that's also provided. Business records is another area. We DBAs doing business as certificates are filed in our office. And that's just, you know, a highlight of some of the issues and some of the responsibilities, which, as you can see in your packet, are many, many more. The recent accomplishments in the office was an upgrading of election voting equipment. So we've already used it twice and it's working out very well. Also, a new filing system was set up. We were really, we're really kind of growing out of the seams in the office and it was hard to get at files and add to our files. So we started a new system. We got rid of some of the file cabinets, but as you can see from the photos there, we still are very cramped. And it's also, it's a very busy office. There's a lot of foot traffic every day. It would be helpful to have another staff member in there, but we couldn't really fit anybody at this point either. So that's about the highlight. If anybody has any questions?
So, I do just wonder though, do you keep any sort of metric on that foot traffic, the volume coming in? I mean, it would be interesting to see if that was over time or-
It's, it's pretty hard to do that because, you know, on any given day, it depends. Like on election, during election times, you can have absentee voters that come in. So I would say, on a busy, typical day, we could have, you know, thirty people come in. Now, I, one thing I didn't mention too was early voting. That's going to be a new, that's a part of the new election laws and that is going to generate a lot of traffic. That's going to start on October twenty-fourth through November fourth. So we're going to be opened, normal hours, but I'm also going to extend the hours, do Saturdays and Sundays, in two evenings. So that's going to be a challenge. Where I'm going to work with Mike and see, you know, right now, the state has designated each city and town clerk's office to be the designated polling place. However, I don't think we're going to have room here, especially with the parking in the back, and it has to be handicapped accessible. So that's another big concern. And also, wherever we decide to have the early voting site, we have to have somebody staff it. And we also have to have, it has to be a secure location because there'll be voting equipment in there.
Looks like we've got to come up with a plan soon.
Yes.
Okay.
So, do I, do, is there any move to try to take all those documents out of there and, you know, digitalize them?
Well, I think that would be something, you know, I've worked with Donna and Mike and that's something that we're going to try to do as a town. But, you know, you still need, you still need some paper copies, some permanent records. I mean, I could never digitize birth and death and marriage. Those have to stay paper. You know, there's a lot of zoning and planning files too. People come in and they want to look at a file and they have permanent records, so. But we, we have done a really good job. What we've done is we've gone back. So we've gone back, we only have ten years in forward right now in the office. And everything else is archived.
Yeah.
So if somebody's looking for an old document, at least we can go down and retrieve it.
Thank you.
Jo, hello. You're here to talk about human resources.
Human resources, that's right. So you see where we fit on the organization chart. I report to Mike, who's the town administrator, but also have sort of a dotted line relationship with personnel board. We have, there are four of us in the human resources department, two full-time, myself and our benefits coordinator, and two part-time, roughly half-time HR administrators, a total of three full-time employees. We support approximately five hundred benefit-eligible employees on the school side, another hundred to fifty on the town side, about two hundred and fifty retirees. So we're a busy office. We support about eight hundred to nine hundred people. Our mission, we are the group that sort of implements the policies that the personnel board has made and that, you know, that Westwood espouses so that we, so that our mission is to basically maintain fair and equitable personnel policies, to establish a personnel administration system based on merit principles and to ensure a uniform, fair, and efficient, you know, implementation of personnel policies. Our areas of service are personnel policy administration, benefits administration, labor relations, performance review systems, and risk management. Just quickly, personnel policy administration, what I mean by that is basically everything from cradle to grave, right? From hiring people to supporting them and right up to including their end of their employment, whether by retirement or some other, some other means. You know, that involves how people act, harassment policies, workplace violence, drug-free workplace, enforcing those policies. You know, standards of conduct, maintaining, you know, administering leaves of absence, you know, family medical leave and that sort of thing. Benefits administration is primarily the, you know, the managing the benefits that they, they take, our employees take advantage of. So entering them into our personal payroll system, managing the deductions and making sure that we're withholding the right amount and coaching people through the process of selecting the right benefits for them and their families. We, we help them select, you know, for flexible spending plans, just all of that, making sure that what they want is coming out of their paychecks correctly. Labor relations, of course, that's collective bargaining, coaching of staff people when there are conflicts within employee groups, handling grievances or disputes. Performance reviews, relatively self-explanatory, evaluating the performance of our employees, thinking about, you know, employee development. And then risk management, making sure that we're protecting the town by enforcing all the policies, applicable laws and statutes, safety training for occupational hazards, harassment, workplace violence, making sure that our employees are safe and that we are minimizing any risk to the town. So that's what we do. Recent accomplishments, I know you've heard about this a lot, but it was a really, really, really big accomplishment to transition to the GIC. And I will just mention that we did it with brand-new staff and we were very understaffed at the time. So we still feel like we're, you know, recovering from that. That was a big one that was really a benefit to the town, I think. The benefits administration, we really did revamp the way we do benefits, handle deductions and work with the accounting department and have really been able to improve the accuracy of our, of our benefits administration process. We were hot, we hired and trained two new members of the HR team who are fully up and running now. We introduced a new performance feedback process for the ATP and library ATP employees. It's really designed to sort of approach that process a little differently. And we really focused a lot in the last, on communication and customer service outreach, specifically down the school side, certainly on the town side as well, but most of the work we do supports the schools. And so we really reached out to try to, you know, enhance those relationships and collaborate with them. Some of the issues and challenges I see going forward, of course, collective bargaining agreements are right in the middle of that now and that's so important for the town and our employees. Managing town classification studies and employees' expectations. I'm sort of in the middle of a couple of those and it's interesting for, you know, a classification study really means, can we have more money in many ways, you know? And at some point, we have to, we want to make sure that we are at parity with other towns and that, and that we're paying people well and correctly. But at some point, we just, you know, we just can't-
So that's whoever's in a certain position, are they at the right rate?
Right. Right. Exactly. Is the job description accurate, reflect what they do? Are, are they, you know, paid competitively with other, you know, are we competitive where we need to be in the marketplace? And, and that's not something that's unique to Westwood. You know, private sector, public sector, everyone's dealing with, you know, how to, how to manage that process. We're still navigating the Administrative Care Act, the Affordable Care Act and the requirements of reporting that comes along with that. Focus for the future, this year is going to be increasing our townwide safety and other kinds of training. And I'd really like to, to try to get our, enhance our digital presence. We're going to be having a new website, but really looking at how we can get into more digital documentation and storage of documents because we're just, you know, as you can imagine, personnel files are big. So that's my quick overview.
Questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jo.
Donna, hi.
Hi, Chloe. Nice to see you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So as you can see on our organization chart, I have four staff members. One is dedicated to towns for support, one is dedicated to schools for support, a GIS specialist and an administrative assistant that does mostly school support. And just so that you know, the, the school dedicated personnel are actually paid out of the budget of the school department. So my budget from both operating and also salary comes from both school and town.
But school also has other IT people within their system.
They do, they do. And so we'll, we'll talk about that in a second. But, and I also have an advisory board. It's not a policymaking board, but it's a clearly just an advisory board that was also established as part of the, when the department was established. And another primary function that, that board has is it acts for the Board of Selectmen in franchise negotiations with the cable television provider in which Verizon is now the next one up. So you'll, we'll be seeing you again, hopefully, because our contract is up in February. So, and then you can see my full-time staff. The town, the town IT is centralized, which was established as part of that nineteen ninety-three article to the general bylaws. And at the same time, it identified that the town IT department were responsible for school administration. So in that respect, we're responsible for the student information system, specifically all school and student and staff demographics, scheduling, grade reporting, attendance, all reporting to the state, which has gotten to be a fairly large problem and, and effort. So, so that's, that's a, most of what that school support does. Combined, we also support school personnel that interface with town personnel and accounting and payroll in, you know, accounts payable. All of those areas, we support the school personnel as well as the town personnel. So that's where the crossover is in my department. We have a combined three hundred users between town and schools that we service. And in some cases, it goes down to a teacher level, if the teacher's a department head and is also submitting POs into the fund accounting software. So that's the level of our, of our mission. Areas of service, as we said, is to town and school administration. We're responsible for all centralized IT on the town side, including all departments, public safety, library at the administration level, not, they have their own budget for, within the library, sort of similar to the school. DPW and obviously all municipal departments. And we provide the help desk support to those three hundred users. And we do typical IT stuff. You know, we take care of all the, the computers, all the peripherals, everything that's associated with IT. We also manage the web content and services. And throughout all that, we ensure the security of all the, the data and the equipment. For recent accomplishments, we recently implemented a cloud backup solution, which was a supplement to our existing server-to-server backup. It provided us one more off-site solution in case of disaster. And we're well positioned now for a disaster, within our disaster recovery plan. We migrated all users to an Office 365 platform. And the next two items, sewer billing changes as well as like the, the supported the data requests and reporting associated with the Affordable Healthcare Act and the GIC. And so I work very closely with all of the department heads as they get requests for data. Because then I work with the individual software to extract the data, get it into a format that whoever's asking for it, needs it, and then submit it to them. And we obviously manage all the school data. We replaced existing servers with new sets of servers. And it's a combination of virtualized and physical. So we're implementing new technology all the time. And we prepared an RFP for a permitting solution. We managed the review, I managed the review, and we recently identified a new vendor. So that'll be a permitting solution for all land use departments. It'll be, it'll be very nice and, and it's a new system. It's a, it's, we're getting into this more software-as-a-service where there's nothing actually installed locally, there's no on-premise server, it's all on the cloud. And we also have an RFP that's been awarded and we're working on implementation with new website.
Donna, who did you select for that?
View Permit, View Government Solutions is the company. It's a Massachusetts company. But we received nine bids and it was a very, a very detailed process to go through and we were very happy. Several people in the room here were actually members of the review team, that we had representatives from land use, fire, you know, everyone. So I was really pleased with that, that result. We're very happy with the result. For issues and challenges, we have to sustain our core services while also supporting innovation and facilitating growth, and also consider the impact to the IT budget. Most of our costs are fixed, hardware and software maintenance costs. There's very little extra money in that budget. It's almost all dedicated to fixed costs. I don't have control over those fixed costs. And in addition to that, we're, we're now seeing a more of a move to software as a service and we're seeing increased costs to that versus our old model of an on-premise server. And as we encourage growth, what is, considers, considered today's innovation is tomorrow's core service. So every new technology that we introduce is an impact to the operating budget. So the operating budget increases in IT at a much higher rate than other departments do. So I'm trying to understand and keep that in check, but also have the ability to encourage new growth. Like a document management solution like we talked about is the next RFP down the line that we'll be looking at and to look at making our documents digital. One more thing that I wanted to point out, Dottie's exactly right, where some documents have to be kept in actual paper form, but a part of that is the way the state identifies what the requirements are for those documents. And until they start updating their policies on what can be kept in a digital format, we, we have to comply with those rules and regs. It doesn't mean that they have to be maybe on-premise. So we could potentially get rid of some paper, but you can't totally get rid of it. You have to potentially-
Can't shred it.
You can't, no.
Or relocate.
Or relocate, yes, yes, absolutely. Second- The second.
I know, I was so nice.
The, the second issue or challenge for me is that we're going into our budget season in the next couple of weeks, we'll be defining what our operating and capital, first capital requests are. I'm requesting capital for now that potentially might not only be used in July of 2017, but also in March of 2018. So technology is changing so quickly that we have to identify money for a technology that's probably not even being developed now or made available to us. So that, that, that's, that has been a challenge. Typically, we get requests throughout the year, we never anticipated those requests would be coming to us. And then the, the last, which is, it seems like a simple statement, maintain a secure infrastructure. We are seeing lots of attacks, cybersecurity attacks. Many towns, one neighboring town got hit very hard with a ransomware attack, and we're keeping our eyes, and you also have to walk a line where you have to have the ability to be very open and allow data to be used and how, and allow your users to use tech, new technology, while also understanding that there may be a potential risk associated with that. So that's, that's been something, thankfully, we haven't had any issues to speak of, but that doesn't, I mean, everyone gets them, so it's pretty, it's a matter of when and not if, so.
I remember seeing a real-time map at my alma mater that shows where the attacks are coming from, a global map.
Yeah.
Just showing the lines and everything, a lot coming out of Africa where it hits, blew my mind. I guess you can call that up.
Yeah.
I could send you the link if you want.
It's scary.
Oh, it's scary. It's totally, it's very scary. I mean, it's just an act of enterprise. Too bad that's not going to more productive things, but anyway, thank you. Any questions for Donna?
I do, Donna, the only email server that the kids in the school, does, do you, does the IT department control that?
We don't do the school, the school uses, actually, they're a Google-based system, and so everyone's on Gmail associated with it, so there is no email server in the schools if you're looking at an actual big physical office.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, when I get one from the, from the schools telling me that, I don't know, school's going to be canceled tomorrow, you know, that blast goes out to the entire.
Right.
Does your IT department control that?
Actually, we, we do manage that.
You do?
But that's only because it's a service that the school department has used called School Messenger.
Right.
And, and someone has to be the administrator of that, and so my department's the administrator of that. So, for that, but we actually do an automatic dump every night of all student, obviously the parent, and the staff information, so that it's up to the minute based on, so you want to know what that's, when that school closes, you want to have a right phone number in there.
Right, okay.
Any questions, Donna?
Thank you, administrative folks that were here tonight.
We're not done yet, right?
Oh, no.
You have, you have. You're just in administration. Okay. So Department of Public Works. Okay, some of you guys have to get the memo that it's hot up, and facial hair is not a cool thing.
Todd only grows it on one end.
Is this until the first snowstorm, or what's the deadline?
I don't know.
Usually happens during, like, playoff season.
The stool here.
Okay, so next department office, Department of Public Works.
I didn't get any of this department, anyway.
Yeah, well, he's been there too sometimes.
I can take care of that.
I just, I first want to thank Christine and Catherine, they did a tremendous job helping us out with the PowerPoints. Cindy and Patricia Haley back at the office, too, it was a lot of back and forth, but I think Christine is very humble over there, and Catherine, who's not here, would think they deserve a round of applause for helping us with this, because it was, again, a lot of back and forth.
I'll confirm that.
Thank you, Christine.
Tell Catherine tomorrow.
I also want to thank.
Christine, for that, you can skip the next meeting.
I want to thank Jeff, Jimmy, and Brendan for being here as well, because they're, I mean, they didn't have to technically be here tonight, but this is kind of how we, how we do things. We're a team, so, I mean, it's just an example before we even get into this.
A busy team at that. It sounds like everybody is from what we just heard and what we're going to hear.
Definitely, absolutely.
Help me out here, so I know you and I know Brendan.
Jim McCarthy, Facilities.
Okay.
Jeff Bina, Town Engineering.
John Nick.
Yeah, John.
So this is our group, so I, we start with our organization chart. We have our Highway Superintendent. It was formerly known as the Highway Superintendent position, but we renamed it to the Operations Manager. Reason being, Highway Superintendent was almost like an old-school terminology, where Brendan has his hands on quite a bit with respect to the department itself. So Brendan Ryan, John, you've met him before.
Yeah.
Our Facilities Manager, again, is Jimmy McCarthy, who's in charge of all the municipal infrastructure. And our Deputy Director, Town Engineer, and Director of Sewer Operations, Jeff Bina. Obviously, underneath each one of those individuals, you can see the different tiers that fill each one. This just gives you a list of the exact personnel that we work with day in and day out. Total staff, summertime, 37 employees, that includes summer staff. Not sure we need to get into the specific numbers of each, but. So our department mission, I mean, this is, this is pretty elaborate. Just to simplify it, our mission is to make this community the best in the Commonwealth. I think every day we strive for that. I think, again, these guys right here, my right hand, I think we all just work great collaboratively to do that. And I always say, we look at Westwood like a massive landscape account, that we want it to be the five-star landscape account in the Commonwealth, so. Maybe we can read this here, but I think that summarizes it as simply as you can. So our department itself is broken up into five divisions. We have our Highway Division, our Sewer Division, our Engineering Division, Facilities Division, and, I mean, more importantly than everyone in general is our Administrative Assistants, who, again, aren't here tonight, but they're the, the first line of defense. I always say they're our first line of customer service, so I classify them as their own division as well. Within our Highway Division, obviously, our goal is improve and maintain roadways, bikeways, trailway systems, responsible for landscape maintenance of all municipal infrastructure. We provide the obvious, sanding, salting, plowing for snow and ice removal. Highway Division as well, responsible for all the fields and ground maintenance, all the maintenance of all the athletic fields in town. Brendan's had his hands on the solid waste and recycling program in town, now entering its fourth year in the community itself. It was something that was new when I actually took over as Director. I think the transition has been, it's been pretty smooth. I mean, at first, it was something new into the community, and I think everybody's adapted quite well to it. And then vehicle maintenance, we have 40-plus vehicles, equipment, loaders, you know, trackless machines for winter snow and ice removal, so just a number of things.
What does the catch basin, sewer or highway?
We subcontract out for the catch basin cleaning.
Okay, but you have to oversee it?
We do, yeah. There's a company that comes in.
Team effort, combination, as you can probably tell.
We do, and, and that's part of our, our stormwater requirements nowadays, too, is tracking that as we go through the process. But over 2,200 catch basins in town that we contract out, they come in annually at, towards the third, second, third week of November, once all, obviously, the leaves are fallen.
Oh, yeah.
We don't want to do that before then, because then it's, you're kind of not accomplishing what you want to accomplish, but.
Minimization of use of sand.
Yeah, we haven't.
Significantly impacting.
Going back to our snow and ice operations, and kudos to Brendan for this, is we don't use sand at all. We don't even have a bunker full of sand. We, I lie, we have a bunker full of sand, but we don't use it for snow and ice operations, we use it for mixing concrete, that's it. So as far as our snow and ice operations and the effect on our 2,200 catch basins in town, it's, you've seen a significant impact to the type of debris and sediment that they're pulling out of these catch basins.
To the betterment.
To the betterment, absolutely.
But the trade-off is more chemicals?
We use more chemicals, we use what's known as magnesium chloride on the roads. This could go on for hours, but a very effective pretreatment measure in snow and ice defense that we've learned, and thanks to Mike for allowing us to attend snow and ice conferences, we've learned this technique through individuals from Wisconsin, Alaska, all parts of the country, and it's been very effective the past few years we've used it, so.
I think a big thing is the efficiency with which it's used with the new equipment and the new, the new technology that's out there.
Absolutely. Yeah, the equipment that we've received via town, at spring, at town meeting, in the support of the FinCom, the Board of Selectmen, Mike, Pam, everyone. So it all works together as one. Recent accomplishments, obviously, flay hive football field, the turf field, that's beautiful in itself, they should be wrapping up the field by the end of this week.
Ahead of schedule?
Right on schedule. There's been a little bit of a backlog with respect to the track itself. We're going to overspray the track, but the company that's on the hook for that is hung up at MIT right now, so we might actually put the overspraying off. It depends, we're going to get a defined timeline by the middle of this week. If it looks like we have to put it off, it's not in extreme dire need. We would love to do it right now, it needs to be done now, but the track will not go to despair if we don't do it right now either, we can wait until the spring, so. Deerfield Field Reconstruction, I'm not sure if the public has utilized the facility or people have seen, I know some people have, it's beautiful.
So what is it used for and when will it be fully operational?
It's, it's fully operational as we speak, it's used for a wide variety of sports. The Rec Department has done a fantastic job as far as the permitting process goes. Softball's been out there, soccer's been out there, I know there's plans potentially for lacrosse to be out there, but the way we design the field is to accommodate all user groups, so. And there's also a walking trail along the perimeter, which I've seen a number of individuals use, and it's a rustic stone walking trail. You're not going to see the Olympics running around the thing, but you'll see individuals using on a day, day-out basis. New cemetery expansion project, one of the most, I would say, impressive projects I've seen within the past few years. Brendan took a great deal of pride in this project, there's a lot that went into it, couple of years of design and trying to figure out exactly what we wanted to do there, but just a, if, not that it's a great place to want to visit by any means, but it is something to see with a fountain and beautiful.
For those people who do go there and with their loved ones there, it's very important, so.
I did drive down after the last meeting. It is impressive.
It's something to see, definitely. And the staff in general, I mean, Jeff worked collaboratively with Brendan with this, and I can't say enough about these guys. In, in all these projects right here, this is the team that puts it together. I mean, we, the town supports it, but these guys drive, drive it, and I'm just more proud of them and their accomplishments, and you go through these bullets, it's, kudos to them again, I can't say enough. We recently received a number-one rating in the state for the School Street Playground, again, Jimmy McCarthy, you know, he's in charge, he went and obtained a certification from the state to be a playground inspector, which, it sounds like something, it was, it was a tough exam, I think Jimmy did.
Very rough.
So, but it's something like that, that you have an individual on staff now that can do an annual inspection within your playgrounds, your town-owned playgrounds, which could become a liability at some point, you have to make sure it's not, and you're up to speed with every little nick and cranny.
Schools know of your credentials?
Yes.
We recently renegotiated a new contract extension with Waste Management, where we've had, we implemented a bulk item pickup free of charge to residents, and that'll take place twice a year. The dates are advertised on our website, they've been advertised in the flyer, so residents can take advantage of that. We recently obtained a certification from the state for complete streets projects. We were one of very few communities as of, you know, 10 months ago to really move forward with this, thanks to some individuals that were very helpful in educating myself and our department with respect to the program. And then as of a week and a half ago, we received notification that we received a $400,000 grant from the state to proceed with.
Congratulations.
The project, thank you. Something that we're very proud of, because, again, we're one of the, you know, front-running communities in the Commonwealth to obtain this, and $400,000 that we can put towards our infrastructure goes a long way, as far as sidewalk enhancements and striping and painting work that we can put into the community.
That was the full amount of the ask?
Yes, yep.
Perfect.
We are obviously committed to East Street Bridge design. We've been meeting periodically with the state, and we've been receiving updates. I know we're probably on tap, I would say, Mike, soon for another, another meeting. We met with them probably about six, seven weeks ago, and received word that they're still moving forward with design and whatnot, but, I mean, it's, that's just.
Not at 25% yet.
I don't think so, no. But they were, they were making significant headway, and I think it's something we should hear back from them very shortly as far as what the next percentage is as far as the design goes. Our future projects, obviously, I mean, one thing that we take a great deal of pride in is our paving projects, where we stand from a pavement management standpoint. We had a pavement management study done about a year ago, and received a rating of 86.5, which the engineering firm that performed the study said it was the highest they've ever seen. So our goal, obviously, is to maintain that. We're, we're very into that. Paving's something that Christine will joke around, that I get very excited to talk about, but I do, because I think it's something that has a significant impact to our community.
Well, I remember when Vicki was here and started that evaluation, that grading, hiring somebody to do that, isn't that when it started?
What you want to do is do an annual, well, not an annual inspection, you want to do an inspection on your roads every three to four, maybe five years, might be pushing it a little bit, but we took advantage of a Maya grant about two years ago that funded over 50% of the most recent study, which, and we can take advantage of that every three or four years and have a new reevaluation done. Tells us where we are from a pavement management standpoint, and also shows the community the progress that we're making with the funding that we have. In our Sewer Division, Jeff does a fantastic job with that. We have two individuals, we have a pump station manager and a pump station operator, but Jeff oversees the entire department. I will say that our pump station manager, Rich Barry, is fantastic. I think Jeff could probably go on for hours with the tremendous amount of knowledge that Rich has for our infrastructure, but as you can see, there's 90 miles of sewer pipe, 2,600 sewer manholes. Sean Degnan is absolutely fantastic. I've seen these guys in action in, again, a group of individuals that you don't want to hear their name, but I'm going to mention it now in a complimentary standpoint, but you, I mean, you hear something about the sewer, sometimes things are going wrong, so they just fly under the radar, and I've seen them in action do things that I don't think we want to really discuss here to make sure our infrastructure's up to snuff. Bringing Jeff aboard was probably one of the most positive impacts in our department in what he has done from the sewer standpoint, as far as bringing in preventative maintenance program. Not only you think of pipes, you think of manholes, but just our pump stations also. He's developed a pump station facilities program where it's a capital program that annually, we go through the intricacies of each pump station, the mechanisms, the grinders, all the way up to the roof tiles on each building that we have, or pump station that we have, and he's done a fantastic job in developing that, and, again, testament to him himself. Recent accomplishments with respect to the Sewer Division, we improved their Grove Street drainage, we have a Grove Street and Summer Street sewer extension project in the works right now. That sewer facility assessment and pump station maintenance program, those are the third and fourth bullets that I just mentioned, and we just, we, this past town meeting, we actually had an approved pump station operator position. We have two individuals, Rich Barry, I hope he never leaves, but at some point in time he will retire, so rather than wait for him to retire and then be up against a gun with something as intricate as our sewer system itself, we wanted to bring in an individual to shadow him. Sean's there, so now we'll have three total individuals, and in the event that Rich does leave, at least it's a fluent transition where we have someone that can slide right in, not be, you know, a crash study type of program, we don't want to do that. Our future project with respect to the sewer, obviously sewer pump station capital repair, again, with the buildings, ongoing inflow and infiltration development, and enhanced second meter reading systems. With the recently developed, our, the recently added LED streetlights in town, we have the capability or the potential to actually read second meters through that mesh network system, and we're going to look into that. We might ask for some volunteers in town, I myself might volunteer just to do my second meter and see if the lights and everything can work out, and if it becomes something that could be helpful to our department, then I think it might be the route to take. Our Engineering Division, again, Jeff is responsible for the Engineering Division, maintains plans and records of the town, utilities, sewer, drain, oversight and management of sewer, roadway and drain construction problems. You can go through the bullets here, provides assistance to the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Building Department. Another thing that Jeff brings is stormwater compliance, the knowledge and the background pertaining to that, that's going to be something big that the town is going to have to adhere to, and we're already leaps and bounds ahead of where we probably should be with respect to our stormwater compliance, and he's done a fantastic job, job with that. Not only that, he also develops all of our bid documents for all of our Chapter 90 projects and paving, paving estimates, and he's always within $4,000 or $5,000 away from $600,000, $700,000 of projects that come into bid, which is very impressive. Our Facilities Division, Jimmy McCarthy takes the lead on this. He maintains all the municipal building infrastructure. Patricia Haley, too, is one of our administrative assistants, I've mentioned her name on a couple of different occasions. She has worked very, very closely with Tom Philbin, who's our Energy Manager, and between the two of them, they're like the dynamic duo as far as getting the Greens Community grants together. Last year, they, we received $242,000, that was dispersed through various projects in town. This year, we received $210,000. So as, as much as. This year, we received $210,000. So as much as Tom is beneficial to the community, I can honestly say Patricia Haley, with respect to her knowledge now of filling out that Greens Community Grant, because it's something that there was some serious concern a few years back, and we promised certain boards and certain commissions that we were gonna fulfill our obligation to make sure that that was, and we did. We filled it out, and every year, we're right up front with it. One of our goals too, within the Facilities Department, is to develop an overall assessment for all town buildings. Jimmy has been working on that diligently. What we're gonna look at is all the square footage within the community, municipal community. Jimmy, square footage-wise, what do we have? Buildings?
Just under $120,000 without the police and fire, in the buildings.
So what Jimmy's goal is gonna be is just to look at each square foot and say, what's the optimal usage for this? Where do we stand? What's the capital investments and what are our needs moving forward, which is obviously critical.
We heard it tonight for storage of records, town clerk, I mean, there are a lot of, and I'm sure assessors and...
Definitely.
A lot of people squeezed in their space.
Yep, absolutely. Then our Fifth Division, and it's by no means a ranking or a pecking order, it's as important as any division that we have as our administration. We have Cindy Barantola, Laura Fisk, and Patricia Haley, who are fantastic. You know, they're the ones that answer the phones. They're the ones where really their work orders originate from. Tremendous amount of knowledge. We've had some, you know, some new programs that we've implemented. Trash and recycling, as I had mentioned before, was fairly new a few years ago, and the transition went very well, but thanks to them, it went very well, because they were the ones, they were in the forefront of the phone calls, the initial phone calls. But as you can see, I mean, this is a list of probably 10 to 12 items here, and then you go all the way to the bottom of the list and you say, well, what are FEMA and MEMA reimbursements? And that gets into a critical element of our budget where we're seeking out reimbursements for storms that cost us a tremendous amount of money. And you have someone like Cindy or Tish or Laura that sit there and work with Brendan, Jeff, or Jimmy as far as where are all our costs? You know, where do they come from? And not only do they deal with our department, they're also compiling all the data and the statistics and the information from the Police Department, the School Department, the Fire Department, and getting all their numbers circulated in to one desk. And then we're compiling all that information and submitting that for reimbursements that obviously help out towards the end of the fiscal year, so. A great thanks to them. I think they're ones that kinda fly under the radar, but they're extremely important to our organization. The two commissions that we deal with are the Sewer Commission, the elected board, and the Cemetery Commission. Both obviously, Cemetery Commission's an appointed board. Both play a very, very large role. An example, Cemetery Commission, a couple of years ago, Brendan was instituting new rules and regulations, and a lot of it incorporated the notion of cleaning up the old and new Westwood Cemetery, cleaning up with decorations and monuments and stuff that we just wanted aesthetically, just make everything more uniformed. And the Cemetery Commission played a large role with respect to that, I would say, and...
Big time.
Issues and challenges. I think from a building and maintenance standpoint, obviously, we have new infrastructure coming up. We're still dealing with the ups and downs of the library with respect to just getting a consistent read on what the utility bills are gonna be. Now that Tom Philbin's been involved with energy efficiency, we should see that start to level off a little bit, that we can get a better grasp on the annual budget for that building as far as energy efficiency. But we will have the new police. We will have the new fire, and there will be a timeline of, you know, when are we gonna get a firm handle on this as far as establishing a level plateau of budget, so. But with Jimmy in place, he's been attending all of our construction meetings now with respect to the police station. He's there and he's in the forefront. One of our wish list items, obviously, has always been the construction of a new Public Works Facility. We have the best equipment probably in the state by far, I would say, between our front-end loaders, our back-hall front-end loaders, our skid stairs, and our trucks, which are gorgeous. But we just don't have the space for our equipment. Everything is jammed in in a tight spot, to say the least. So I think at some point in time, it would be in the town's best interest to really look at this. I understand that the police and fire, for obvious reasons, have been on the forefront of that. There are other concerns with respect to the Town Hall and other municipal buildings. But we also have to look at DPW too, because once we actually look at the design, the layout of a potential, potentially a new facility, we could actually integrate potentially a recycling drop-off area where the residents could take advantage of some of the amenities that could be offered within the new facility itself, so. And the other third bullet there is increasing our operating budget to offset necessary funding for Chapter 90 projects. Five years ago, we had a road improvement bond that realistically went a long way. Vicky came in and explained the necessity, the need for extra money to offset our deficiency with respect to Chapter 90. Right now, we receive about $540,000 a year. For us to maintain our current pavement index, we need about $800,000. So something that I've talked to Mike about, I've talked to Pam about, and I'd like the town to strongly consider is having an influx of money annually that we as a department can utilize towards sidewalk enhancements or paving enhancements. There's a number of sidewalks in town that need to be addressed from an ADA standpoint. There's some pavement issues in town that we wanna maintain. We wanna take preventative measures, but the $540,000 that we get from Chapter 90 simply isn't enough. A number of communities, surrounding communities, have an influx of money that come in from various funding sources. So you're starting to see this trend and tendency develop throughout the Commonwealth, because towns are realizing that this Chapter 90, it's great to receive that, but it's just simply not enough. So I think it's something, I put it in our capital outlay. I've already started working on that. So I think it's something that I'd really like to see the town consider. In closing, again, I think everything that we do, we take a great deal of pride in. I mean, we, not to say that we do a lot, but we do a lot. These guys work their tail off. I keep, they go away on vacation, the emails still go, and I tell them all the time, shut it off. One of us will pick up the slack, but they're away. That's how committed each and every one of them are and everyone back at our office. There's projects that we go and we plan and we know we're gonna deal with on an annual basis, and then in the middle of a 12-month cycle, we have a couple of other projects that come up that we weren't anticipating or will pick up in the middle of the project, and we'll, we'll come in and we'll complete the project, and, but these guys are the ones that are out there doing that. And he runs around with his head cut off sometimes, but enjoys it, I think. Jimmy runs around with his head cut off sometimes, enjoys it. Jeff runs around with his head. We, if we didn't enjoy it, we wouldn't be sitting here right now. That being said, I can't be more thankful for them, our staff back at the office that's not here right now, to the Board of Selectmen for everything, all the support we've had over the past several years to get us to where we are at the FinCom. Mike has been fantastic, and I say this to him in my personal review, that I've had a lot of coaches with baseball, and everyone knows that was my thing. But he's been fantastic, and he's been very helpful with everything that we've done. He's been very helpful with my maturation throughout this whole process. I was new when I started this. And Christine's fantastic, and Catherine, and Tom, and everyone, and Pam, and everyone, so. I just wanna say thank you to everyone, and if there's ever a question, obviously, we're all here. Everyone's here, so.
Any questions, gentlemen, Michael?
Nope.
I wanna make a suggestion, if you don't already do it, I can't remember if you do or not, the bulk item pickup. We do a robocall or some other additional notification?
Sure. There are two scheduled dates right now, I believe. One's in October.
Brendan!
It's either you or Jeff.
Leo comes in every once in a while, too.
Leo does a good job.
What are the dates of?
There's one in October, and I believe...
And then the other one is, I think it's set for May.
Well, I know you said it goes out on the press collection notifications or whatever, but I have to say, somebody like myself, I just would miss it unless there's a little more reminder.
We'll send it out. It's, it is on the...
Something. Think whatever you guys think is best. I mean, I don't know if...
I think it's absolutely essential, because people just need to be...
Yeah, well...
Otherwise, you get on the other side of it, oh, damn, I had this ready to go.
Well, I think it's something you want people to do, right? So promoting it's a good thing.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
We offer, but we don't really want much.
They negotiated it. We may as well take advantage of it.
Yeah, okay. So that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask, we have a, one item for Grove Street paving? I don't know if we can...
Yeah, I didn't know if you needed to be here for that, Steve.
I don't know if I...
That's just, what is it?
It's just, it's a contract over $100,000.
Oh, yeah.
It's just over $100,000.
Because it's over $100,000.
Right, that's what I thought. So the item is Grove Street paving project. As is our practice, anything that's over $100,000 requires the Board of Selectmen approval, and when is that going to take place, Todd?
We're thinking towards the tail end of the summer. Oh, we were originally thinking towards the tail end of the summer, but it might be pushed off until early spring next year. Just depends on when the sewer project completes itself. Yeah.
So the contract is for an estimated amount of $175,000. So are there any questions?
I'm sure we authorized the town administrator to sign a contract for the Grove Street roadway paving for an estimated $175,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or is none? And when is Summer Street gonna be done?
Where are we now? Next week, right?
Next week. Two days, two, three days. We should be off Summer Street.
Be open. Onto Grove.
Yes.
So... My commute will change.
Can I have something else, but I'll play one.
Blame ledge on that one.
Well, I'm not gonna blame you girls, that's for sure. You do too much. Thank you. Excellent. Thanks for coming in, everybody. Hey, Chief. Thank you for patiently waiting. It's hard. Somebody's gotta go last, so, for tonight. So now we have Chief Silva to give us an overview of the Police Department and important things coming up. So it's all yours?
Thank you. So I think it's fitting that if somebody was gonna steal my thunder, it would be my good friend in the DPW. Todd and I work very closely, so I was sitting through the presentations. I said, well, good, I get the opportunity to thank Mike and Christine and Catherine, because there's a lot of work that went on, and I'm sure you noticed, to make the, all the presentations formatted in a similar fashion, right? And so it's tough to kinda get our information and, you know, what are we trying to highlight? What are we not trying to do? So I wanted to thank, you know, them for that and say that all the people that came before me, really more so for the benefit, I think, of the people watching rather than the board, because the board well knows this, while they're listed in individual bubbles on the screen, we work together all the time, you know, and it's just, it's so common that we're over on the phone with, you know, Christine or popping into Mike's office or going over to the DPW or in a meeting together trying to make projects happen. There's just so much crossover that I think doesn't really go on, at least in my experience with all municipalities. And I think a lot of that, so far as I can see, is a byproduct of some of the things that the town put in place along before I got here, like the executive function group, where the, there's certain select department heads, some of the ones you've seen tonight, work together. That's, that's great efficiency, right, in a, in a time where bureaucracy sometimes is at an all-time high, and you need to go through a phone tree and make 15 calls to try to get to who you're looking for, only end up in a voicemail box. There's a lot of red tape that's eliminated as a result of the relationships that we have with the boards like yourself or the other workers in town. So I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. I agree. So, yeah, that's fine. So, so here you can see the, just the listing of the, who we have for staff and with the authorized strength and the actual strength that we're at, and they're matching currently. So by authorized strength, I don't mean necessarily that it hasn't been discussed before. For instance, like a deputy chief that the town kinda acknowledged the possibility of that position and took out a civil service in advance of the Police Department coming out of, out of civil service, but rather authorized in terms of what's budgeted, what's talked about in the budget and what's in reality. And so we had some vacancies at one point, and those vacancies are no longer there. So it's myself, the lieutenants, five patrol sergeants for the benefit of the people at home, a sixth sergeant who's, that serves as a support services supervisor and the traffic safety sergeant, that's Paul Siccard, who many people know. We have really three detractives, but they're broken down into two detectives and one court prosecutor, just because the court prosecutor doesn't really do cases. It's, it's some very limited occasions does he have the opportunity to do that, because what used to be, you know, tantamount to almost a part-time job, where you're doing the court prosecutions part of the time and kicking in with investigative help the other part of the time, it just doesn't happen. And between the evidence custodian and all the motions and everything that's filed in court, that's really a full-time job. We have one school resource officer currently. We have 18 patrol officers. I think a lot of times when people think of the police, you can look at, well, we have 31 full-time sworn police officers, from myself to the most junior officer, but the reality of, well, who's out driving around on the streets of Westwood on a regular basis, answering the calls across all three shifts, 18 patrol officers. And then we list the dispatch personnel, because I think something that people may not know is that the Police Department handles all the calls for service for police, fire, medical. That's the radio traffic back and forth between the public safety officials, relaying the information that comes in on 911. That's also answered here in town. The cell phone calls that currently are answered by the State Police statewide and then get transferred to the jurisdiction where they belong will soon be answered in Westwood and sooner here than other places, because we volunteered to get signed up with...
Excellent.
With the, what they call the next generation 911. So that's very helpful, you know, it cuts down on time.
How much time will that save?
Oh, quite a bit. It'll save a lot, particularly with us, because we get the transfers sometimes for West Ford, you know, and vice versa. And so, you know, those seconds and minutes mean life, so it's an important thing, and it just enhances our level of service. So we do all those. Also, what they call the TTY, the hearing impaired calls that come into 911, and as well as text messaging calls with the next generation of 911 that'll be coming in, that's all the Police Department. So we, we manage that in-house. Those are Police Department employees. It certainly is an efficiency in terms of public safety, because police and fire work so closely together. That's another efficiency that we have here in town. There's not two sets of dispatchers, two phone lines. We hear all the calls they're going to, because we send them and vice versa. When we show up at the same type of call, we're already that much further ahead of the game. We also take care of animal control calls in town, which is a very animal-friendly town. That turns out to be quite a busy job, as well as the crossing guards, which are part-time, but we have a baker's dozen of them in and around the schools. Certainly a very significant job, one that's not without danger, as we know. We had one crossing guard very, very seriously hurt a number of years, well, a few years back, actually, not that long ago. And they'll, they'll be kicking up again when school starts. And so you can see the mission statement there up on the screen, but, you know, people can read it, and it certainly, it talks about some of the things we did and the obvious, about protecting life and property. But I would say you could sum that up really as service. It's the town motto, committed to service. One of the things I changed on the cruisers is to put the town motto on the back fender, because I figured everybody knew how to call 911 by now, so there was no sense putting it on the back of our police cars. And I thought it made sense to focus on service. And at the end of my presentation, I'll just tell you a little memory, kind of a mnemonic, if you will, that I use for the various letters of the word service, that I think gives you a little more broader detail about what we do, but that's why we're here. We're here for public service to the community, to keep them safe, to keep them secure. No call too small, so to speak, whether it's a bump in the middle of the night or a robbery at a gas station or a car accident or anything in between. So that's, that's the mission that, of the Police Department. And we provide those services, you know, through, I'd say, four broad categories that you see on the screen. I think for all intents and purposes, when many people need the police, they say, we need the police, and they just call 911, and they don't have any real cognizance of what's going on behind the scenes, you know, nor should they burden themselves with it. But I think it's important for them to know in times like this, when it's calm, that there are a lot of moving parts there. And in your written packet, I wrote that it's, I think it's analogous to going into the emergency room. If you don't feel well, you show up at the hospital, and maybe your point of intake is the emergency room. Even though you may need to see a specialist and certain people to handle certain duties, you just go to the emergency room. And so for us, the emergency room, if you will, is walking into the lobby of the police station or picking up the phone and calling 911. Those 911 calls, speaking of, come through the Communications Division that I've already just spoken about, the dispatch area, police, fire, medical, walk-in complaints to the public. We don't have officers in the station. There was a point in time when there were police officers in the station. I think the town probably smartly evolved away from that during a period of time when call volume was low, because there's so much specialized training that's involved in that. They wanted to try to get that police officer out on the road. That's somewhat come full circle, because, you know, now we take police officers off the road sometimes to deal with in those walk-in complainants. Somebody walks into the station for a problem, and if it can't be handled through an explanation, we have to call the officer out of the sector to come into the station. So that, you know, that's something that we may revisit down the road in a different form than it existed in the past, but nonetheless, that's our Communications Division. The Patrol Division are the officers out on patrol, out driving around on the streets of Westwood. Investigations are our two detectives with some support from the court prosecutor. You're talking about follow-up work on calls that come in. Someone's house is broken into, we send an officer to take a report. That officer may follow that up to a certain level, to the limits of his or her capabilities, but, you know, oftentimes, you know, the person is long gone. They might come home from vacation, they see a broken window or something's missing. That patrol officer isn't gonna have really the resources or training or the ability in some cases to investigate that. That gets forwarded to the Detective Division. And so we have two detectives now that do that. Certainly, they, they're very, very busy. They investigate hundreds of cases a year, and, you know, I'm very proud of them. It's, this isn't the type of thing that we publicize, but at some of the chiefs meeting, many of the chiefs joke with me when they have some unsolved cases and say, hey, when's your detective gonna solve this case? They solved three breaks for us last month, because our two detectives that we have are very diligent. They love what they do. very diligent, they love what they do. Derek Stokes, in terms of his thoroughness, is one of the most thorough and best detectives I've ever worked with, and, you know, I would say humbly, I used to be the chief of detectives in New Bedford. We had a lot of people, we have 40-plus detectives there. And so, there were a lot of things going on, he's a very smart guy, he's got his law degree, he's, his integrity is unparalleled, and he's just so methodical that by the time he hands that case into the court, it's like a Christmas present with a bow on top. So, I think he speaks volumes to the quality of service that we have here in town. And Don Murphy, the new detective we met and the board supported, has really just taken a page right out of Derek's book, and he's kind of forging his own path with some more proactive investigations, but again, he's doing a great job. And lastly, special operations and support services, what's that? Kind of everything else. That's the traffic safety officer, that's the K-9 division, we have a K-9 officer now, which is new to the department, you know, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, the school resource officer. Those are the things that, that we do, technical services, that people, again, may not necessarily associate with picking up the phone and calling 911, nonetheless, it's a function that we So, I, I think we've already gone through what communications does, I would just add to that, just to put it in perspective for the people that say, you know, gee, how busy is it? I mean, it's, it's Westwood, right? We hear that a lot, you know, it's Westwood, for God's sake. Yes, and so, it's challenging to make sure that you're as proactive as possible and, and responsive to the calls that come in, of which there were over 27,000 logged calls for service last year in Westwood. That's not just you stop an officer and he or she handles it, and they don't even put it in the log, because, you know, that might be 50,000 calls for service, I don't know, it's that many. And still maintaining the privacy and, and the sensitive, the sensitivity that you would want. I mean, this is, we're not doing self-promoting press releases, you know, we're trying to handle people's business in a professional way. And the nerve center for that is communications, that's where it's all funneling from. And there's also regional communications that occur, when you have mutual aid responding to other towns or they're responding to us, so it's a busy place. That's the communications division. The patrol division, next. I think, again, you know, we've already spoken about that, that's the, the so-called front line, that includes traffic accidents of, you know, which, as we all know, is voluminous. We have a conglomeration of a road and rail system here in town that keeps us busy at every front, and so, that's, that's something we're very busy with. We have people constantly looking for a shortcut to get to work or to somewhere else, and so they often find themselves trying to get off the highway, and, you know, that drives the need for a lot of traffic enforcement, or going down to, say, University Station, which is certainly a positive thing, but with it, there comes some challenges, and traffic and traffic enforcement is one of them, that's done principally out of the patrol division. Investigations, we just spoke of, but I would, I would just like to add to that, that crime, it's, it's really not the, the burglar in the ski mask crawling through the window that predominates the nature of investigations now, like you saw maybe 15, 20 years ago. It exists in, in many complicated ways. It's telephone fraud, it's internet schemes, it's identity fraud, it's credit card misuse, skimmers placed on different devices, and this requires not only a different level of sophistication, but it also requires networking and investigations that are more broad than they've ever been. Sometimes you identify a suspect for a case here in town, but you really don't have the evidence, because the evidence doesn't work like we want it to, it works like it wants to on its own. And so, but you may have to follow that case to another jurisdiction where you're working with detectives from other local, state, or federal agencies to try to leverage that person when you catch him or her, and then solve that case, you know, coming around the back end of it. So, it's, it's very complicated, it's, it's not linear, it's, it's all over the place. And so, those are some of the, you know, a little more detail on what investigations does. And here, we just list out really some of the, the different things that go on in special operations. So, we mentioned the K-9 team, you know, I'm excited about that, because that's something we didn't have here in Westwood, and solicited a grant for that to, to get it off the ground, and we get great support from the town, like we always do.
Does that K-9 team ever get shared with other communities?
He does, he just, in fact, I, I try to be, when you see Westwood PD tweets, that's not always, but often synonymous with the chief tweeting it out under that account in addition to some of my own, and so, there were recently some tweets from the Walpole Police. We helped them, they had a robbery case, and they, they don't, didn't have a K-9 available, and so, they called us, and we were able to track a suspect path, and we found some evidence from the person that was discarded and identified as the clothing that the person was wearing, and so, certainly it's no guarantee, but, you know, often good results with getting DNA off those items of clothing, so it was helpful to plot the path and, and to recover that evidence, it'll be an important part of their case. So, we've done that a number of times, that we've done some demonstrations. Another component of K-9 is not just enforcement, which is important, because things like tracking people in the woods, a dog can do much more efficiently than a person, but there's also an important educational component, I think. And so, the challenge, I think, less so in, in communities like ours, more so in communities that are shackled with 911 calls, is to get the police officers out behind the window with a police car to interact with the community. And so, our K-9 team has just been at the Rotary Club, he's spoken to the Boy Scouts, he's done demonstrations at Downey School, and so, I say he, they, you know, they've been all over town, and they're very visible members of the community, and I think it's important to kind of dispel some misconceptions about what the K-9 team is, you know, it's...
What was the kids' book with the police officer and the K-9? Do you, there's a children's book.
Oh, really?
You just, yeah.
Oh, okay. So...
It's about first grade level, I'm not there yet. It's where I am at home, the kids.
Okay. No, you, it's, yeah, you should, it's a great book, but it, where you were talking about being in the schools and everything, it was a story from 15 and 18 years ago, but it's...
Wow, okay.
It's a little kid's story.
To look at that, so...
You've got the real thing.
Yeah, no, it's great, and Bicycle Patrol, it's another thing we started out, I mean, we don't have the staffing to run bicycles all the time in weather like we've had, but we certainly do it in certain circumstances, Westwood Day, down at University Station, that, that certainly lends itself to it. Just another way for us to interact with the public. That's, that's a so-called special operation, it's not run out of the front line patrol division, but it's our patrol officers doing it. Recent accomplishments, again, we, we've talked about a number of them, I mean, there's a few others in there that, you know, I think the board, you know, knows about it, there, there may be other nuances that the public may not know. For, for the vehicles, for example, like the detective or administrative vehicles, that we don't require things big enough to transport people, or that aren't required to be a first response car in the wintertime, we've transitioned to hybrid vehicles, and particularly when gas was heading in what I would say was the wrong direction even a couple of years ago, that was important. I mean, you're talking about a 30% improvement in fuel economy alone, certainly a smaller carbon footprint, and, you know, I think it just goes in keeping with the intent of the town and the green community. We, again, we transitioned to SUVs for police cars, but those are six-cylinder SUVs, not eight-cylinder Crown Victoria cars, more efficient and more practical when we have winters like we had a couple of years ago. It doesn't help if, when you call 911, we can't get there. So, that, you know, that's another thing that we've done. Couple other, you know, important things I'll mention in brief, is we've really have an enhanced amount of involvement between our Police Department and the schools and some of the senior residents. It's always been a pretty community-involved Police Department, and, you know, our residents know that, but we've even ratcheted that up a notch with... ...... type of presentations that we do, something as simple as the chief going to the High Street Market and grabbing lunch and going into the elementary schools. I mean, I think it's important to demystify the uniform in the office of the police officers to realize that, you know, it's, you know, we're part of the community, we, we want to police with it, we don't want to impose ourselves over it. And, and last, but certainly not least, was an implementation of something that some other communities have, I think it's a, certainly a big issue, is a community crisis intervention team, a mental health, a group of specially-trained police officers to learn to de-escalate and deal with mental health situations that otherwise heretofore would present themselves maybe like someone who is disorderly or causing a disturbance, and, and the traditional response to that would obviously be enforcement-generated, right? Arrest, incarceration. And so, you know, we've learned and we've tried to be ahead of the curve with that and understand that there are a lot of people that are, that are suffering from mental illness, either bona fide mental illness or drug and alcohol-related temporary situations, and so, certainly we want to make the situation better. We don't want to make it worse. And you can't arrest your way out of that problem, so. Lastly, for issues and challenges, there, in every community nationwide, you see upticks in crime in certain different categories naturally, you know, I talked about some of them with, when you talk about the identity theft and cyber fraud and things like that, it's always a challenge to try to keep up with technology, to keep up with the criminal element, because they're not confined by town meetings and selectmen's meetings and Capitol requests, right? They do what they want to do on their own schedule, and they do it without any plan or any regard for the rules. And so, when you're trying to operate within the rules and you have people who are not confined by the rules, it's always a challenge to deal with that. You know, that being said, Westwood is an extremely safe town, and so, when you, the statistics are what they are, it's just, we've gotten much, much busier. Westwood, in many ways, is the same town it's always been in terms of its approachability and friendliness and service and safety and the way it's run and managed. You know, in other ways, it's a very different town, it's certainly the different characteristics with University Station and others, it's driven the call volume up exponentially for, for fire and police, I think in particular. And so, that, that's a challenge, it's a very safe town, but those, those are some challenges we face. How do, how do we address that? How do we do it in a way that's fiscally responsible? I've taken a very conservative approach. I always say that I spend the money of the Police Department and make requests to spend it like I'd spend my own money, you know? I'll, I'll get a quote from one of my officers and look, and I'll say, "That's too much money for that," and I'll get on the phone sometimes and say, "Wait a minute, that's not, this is ridiculous, it can't be that." And so, we try to do that, and I certainly place a premium on handling it that way. At the same time, we're seeing now that while I think it's been wise, and certainly in the best interest of the town, not to try and overstaff the police, we wanted to wait and see what the demand was, a little different challenge than fire. Fire knows that if we're going to have more residences or more people and we're in a station house and we're responding to a fire and someone needs an ambulance, well, we can't call them off a fire to go. So, a little bit, I think, easier to staff up fire like they've started to do and like has been done in anticipation of that, whereas I think for police, that was a gamble that I was unwilling to take, because I didn't want to anticipate the rise in crime, only to find, gee, it didn't go up that much, and now, and now what has happened. So, that, that's a challenge. I think the, the other challenge has been addressed, and we're, you know, we're very grateful for it, great support by the, the board and the, the town offices and administrator and the residents, candidly. The police station was, you know, a functioning building for over 50 years, but, you know, as I've said before, built in 1960, its gas was 33 cents a gallon, so, it was really, you know, well beyond its usable life, and the world changed, and we need to change with it. So, we got the support to do that, and, and that, that was a significant challenge, because you're talking about evidence storage and all the other litany of things we discussed that just made that building not functional for all the mandates that existed in a modern-day society. And so, I would just close, when I told you about service, just for the people to hear it, not that I want to necessarily enumerate each one, when you think about, you know, service, what do you think of? You think about ask for safety, right? It's, it's important that we not only provide consolidated public safety, dispatch, police, fire, and medical, but the overall safety and, and engendering of a safe feeling in town. We want this to be the kind of town it is, and we work very hard to maintain that. Education, we don't just provide enforcement, we go out and try to educate the public, whether it's going like Sergeant Siccard and I did, you know, somewhat recently, in the last couple of months, to talk about distracted driving and text messaging, whether it's sending our school resource officer to talk about stranger danger, or any of those things in between, education is a critical component of the service we provide. Responsiveness, when people pick up the phone, you know, we want to be there, we don't want to tell them, you know, we'll, we'll be there when we can, and so, we want to make sure that we're responsive to the needs of the community, whatever that need is. Again, no, no call too small. V vigilance, and, and I think, you know, this is important, because again, many people don't necessarily associate initially the need for vigilance and, and presence and, you know, a sense of homeland security, if you will, with Westwood, right? People assume, oh, no, that only happens in the back alleys of the most, you know, troubled urban environments, but, you know, we know that Newtown was a community not terribly unlike Westwood, we know that Columbine was not a community terribly unlike Westwood, we know that the Boston Marathon bombers ended up in Watertown, in and through some affluent towns before they got there, and so, we want to stay vigilant and make sure that this stays the type of community that it is, and that, that's something that is a, a critical component of, of our service to the town and doing it in a way where it's not oppressive. There's a big difference between being vigilant and being oppressive, and it's a difficult balance to strike, and I, I think, you know, we certainly work very hard to do that. I, integrity. The police officers here and, and their integrity and their character is something that's very important, not only to me, but I think it, quite candidly, it's, it's important to them, and you can see it in everything they do. We, we're dealing with people's children, we're dealing with people's personal lives, we're dealing with people's property that's invaded, whether it's a burglary, a financial crimes, identity fraud. Our officers are held to a very high standard, and, and look, and look at the product they're putting out, over 27,000, 1,000 calls for service, two internal complaints last year against police officers that were related to purported rudeness responding to a call that was resolved amicably. So, you know, I didn't do the math on what two out of 27,640 calls is, but I'll take those numbers all day, and I think that integrity speaks volumes. The C, community policing, community-oriented. Again, this is a Police Department that works with the town, we don't impose ourselves over it, we certainly don't think we're any better than that, it's, it's an egalitarian attitude where, you know, we're no better or no worse than anyone else, and we're all in, in this role of policing the community together, you know? Sir Robert Peel said it centuries ago, "The police are the public, the public are the police." And lastly, E for excellence. I hold the officers to a very high standard. Candidly, I don't think they need me to, because they, they really have a very strong work, work ethic, I'm very proud of them, all different, but all the same, in that they want to provide the best service they can. I get letters all the time, I forward them to Mike, he can vouch for this, for the officers that go above and beyond people, out-of-town motorists that get in a car accident and helping them find their way to a hotel, or, you know, lost pets and, and searching backyards and through briars for people, and everything in between. Speaking of people's children, when they think maybe they're not listening at home, not a traditional police response, not a 911 call, but getting involved with families in this community, because we care that much about what we do. And so, I would say again, service is really the main thrust of our mission, and those different categories under service that I just enumerated, I think are some of the things we do to talk about that.
Any questions?
No, I would just say, Chief, it's a pleasure to hear all this, and I have to tell you, in 2009, in my twin floor duty, I took my two newly-installed car seats to the police station to take advantage of the inspection program, and I thought I had done a masterful job, and I remember being so impressed, because the dispatcher called someone, and like, in 30 seconds, the guy showed up, and he got like two more feet out of the seatbelts. So, I, I left that experience so impressed, and just through dealing with the town, I mean, having dealt with several of them, they are, they're so professional, I think they're all great. And Heather, you know, I knew, you know, younger days, you know, so, I'm just so happy to see it. You know, so I think I, that leads me to the crisis intervention team, so happy to see it, anything we can do around addiction. The only ask, I guess I would have, though, and you've highlighted it a couple of times, is the speed, and is the crosswalk, you know, that crosswalk in front of Dunkin' Donuts, I think we're lucky no one's been killed.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, it's not all on you, right? It's the behavior of people. But if there's just an extra ounce of vigilance, we could push around some of the main road speeding and the crosswalks. I would love to see that.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, as schools starting up, we're doing like we always do. We have sector cars at every school as schools opening, the school resource officers out there in full force, just to, you know, remind people visibly with the police officers and the cruisers out there and the crossing guards, "Hey, school's started. Here we are. We already have some tweets lined up and what we hope are some witty tweets to get people's attention, but nonetheless, to let them know that we're going to be out there doing that."
Yeah, I mean, I think especially this year because the school's starting for Labor Day. That's really why I'd ask you to kind of talk. Do we do any sort of town-wide call?
We haven't done a town-wide call as it's related to. I mean, certainly, we have the ability to do town-wide calls. I know in the past, there's always been, and, you know, we'll do it. It's fine. It's just kind of been that balance of people feel like they get too many calls, or they don't listen to them, or they don't take them seriously. But that's certainly a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, as long as there's some communication, I just think it's important.
Right. We certainly, we have a message board that we're going to put up and the sergeant was putting up today. So, yeah, those are all things we do. And if you, I tell you, if you look at the citation numbers also with it, right, I mean, if you just look at that bar graph, it's significant, you know?
Oh, is that in the packet?
That's in the written packet, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. When I was talking with Selectman Walsh, last year, we talked about it, and there were some constituents that came to him with an issue, and I think he, you know, I know he pitched in, you know, trying to warn people, and sure enough, I don't think they were out there, what, but a few minutes?
That's right.
Yeah, they were out there a few minutes and he was telling me, "Look at this." And people, they're taking a picture of the officers out there doing radar. So, they're certainly out there.
Excellent. Well, why don't we move on? I know we've had people waiting patiently for more things, but we have the traffic rules and orders.
Yes.
Before the Board of Selectmen as the road commissioners that we are, but it looks like a lot of work has been done to update our local traffic rules and orders. So, why don't you give the really version?
Sure. So, the thumbnail sketch of traffic rules and orders.
What was the impetus for this before you begin?
Sure. Well, traffic rules and orders have always existed. Just every community has them. They're referenced in the statute. And the impetus was that periodically, you need to go through and make sure the fine schedule and the streets where they define where signs are with all the construction and different things that are going on are still up to date. You don't want to make reference to things that aren't there, signals that aren't there, and so on and so forth. So, every so often, you need to do it, and it was just part of that kind of ongoing, you know, review process.
Like you said, Christine reading the traffic rules and regulations, saying, "Jeez, these are out of date."
I just didn't know if there was any, like, newly enacted regs or something that drove this. So, it's just a...
Really more of a housekeeping?
Things that we just kind of, "Let's take a quick look at this, and wow, these are really out of date."
And they haven't been updated in...
Since '95.
Hey, sorry. No, and so, the reason they exist is, you know, there are general laws in Massachusetts that deal with many violations, rules of the road, if you will, and then there's a code of mass regulations that deals with some enforcement as it relates to state highways and state roadways. And within the both of those, there are things that refer to the regulation and control of vehicles within a city and town, and they refer to, you know, as regulated by town ordinances and so, or charters, or bylaws, whatever the case may be. And so, you know, such things like when can you tow a car, you know, do you want to regulate pedestrian traffic, bicycle safety, you know, towns can enact things that otherwise don't exist as kind of the general, you know, umbrella, if you will, in the state statute, and then it's left individual cities and towns and their sovereignty to tailor-make their regulations as they see fit. So, that's really what that is. There's nothing in here that's earth-shattering, if you will, really?
We had a great summary.
It's just an update of what it was.
Yeah.
An example, John, of something that could happen is a stop sign is in and gets enforced, and I think it gets written because somebody runs a stop sign and it's not listed.
Right.
Technically speaking, the person can fight it and they will win because it's not a listed enforceable stop sign. And so...
Well, that actually makes no sense whatsoever. Right, stop sign there, somebody should...
Yeah.
Oh, I happen to know...
Would you want the law to make sense?
Yeah.
There'll be several of us unemployed.
It's the sort of thing that the traffic rules, you really want to keep them up to date.
Yeah.
Law is a S.
Well, given that it's been 21 years, I don't see anything that's...
I just have one question.
Earth-shattering, please. Go ahead, guys.
As we sat here, Jeff, you remember, the J break went by, and I've been asked by some of the Gay Street residents, especially towards the bottom half.
Right.
If we have a regulation for J breaking, especially on Gay Street. And I don't know if we get to add that, and believe me, I hear it from the truckers, when there is a sign, they do it on purpose.
Yeah.
So, I just don't know. And I'm sure, I won't pick on any one company, but I can think of a large...
Right.
A company that uses a lot of sand.
Yes.
That travels on Gay Street, and the residents at the other end are always complaining. So, I don't know. I didn't see that in there.
Right.
I don't think it has been, so maybe we can do it as another amendment at a later point.
Right.
But, I mean, I understand on the main streets, maybe it's a little bit different, but as we sat here, we all heard out loud.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
And having spoken to a trucker, friend of mine who owns private oil, who is in town, he said they just have to not use it at certain points, and they can slow down the trucks without it, but they do seem to use it. I don't know, it's just, I was brought that up by some of the residents at the lower end of Gay Street, and I said, "Next time we get to traffic."
Yeah, that's certainly a conversation I'm happy to have.
And then, the other two things I had, Tom, I'm sure you looked them over. They're in compliance?
Okay.
The only, Tom, on the penalties, does the town have any discretion?
I think it's...
Right, yeah, that's the issue. So, the officer, like, similar to the general laws, the officer cites the violation and then the statute is the schedule. Now, when it goes to court, they can be creative with different, you know, court costs and dismissals and so forth, which sometimes sets up, you know, the kind of the good guy, bad guy situation for the police, you know, which is unfortunate. You know, certainly, we'd love the ability to look at someone's record and say, "Well, jeez, you haven't gotten a ticket in 25 years." Okay, it's a $25 fine for going through the stop sign. No, it's regulated by statute at 150. Now, if the court wants to similarly reduce that, you know, they can do so, and they do quite often, but...
Only done. $15. It's hardly worth your while, right?
Right, yeah, it's, well, yeah, it's...
And the parking ban starts in December, 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. I read December here. I thought it was November.
Yeah, December to March.
I thought it used to be November.
Is it November?
Yeah, it used to be November. I thought it was December.
I think it got changed to...
It was November, but I think it's December.
Yeah, this says December. So, we change in that?
I think it's always, I think it was...
Bylaw, I think.
I just always, it kind of runs with construction season.
Right.
So, I just kind of, I thought it was interesting. Did it get a storm in November?
Now, there are two things.
Couple of years ago, we had one on October.
Overnight, 2:00 to 6:00 AM, I think, restriction. And then, there's the parking emergency ban that gets issued by the town administrator to cover the storm. And so, that covers the entire storm from start to finish.
Right.
And the overnight is simply to keep cars off the street. Theoretically, in this community, there are very few cars, even in summer, that are parked on the streets.
When is it?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we publicize.
December 1st.
I think that's changed.
As I remember it.
I can't get onto the E code, but...
I mean, I'm fine, but I just think we, I just communicate that.
Yeah, right here. December 1st, 380, Section 11.
To March 31st, yeah.
That's the new one.
I think that changed a few years ago at a town meeting.
At the same time, we changed this...
You changed the snow and ice. We don't need to debate it anymore.
Not me, but a friend got a warning in November, that's all. Not kidding. Years ago. Kidding. Make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to review the redlined version of the traffic rules and orders and approve the proposed amendments and to order the revised traffic rules and orders to be posted on the town's website.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you for the update, and I hope, I know people probably, as I said earlier, home watching the Olympics, but when this airs again, I want to thank everybody who was making presentations. A lot of good content for everybody to be aware of. So, thank you. I know you have somebody you better get on to.
Yeah, I don't think I can compete with the floor routine or Michael Phelps or anything else.
No, none of us can. None of us can. Okay. Maybe, sorry. Want to come forward? We've got, jump into the request to post and fill positions. Okay, so why don't we do the library since you've waited so patiently?
It's Officer Buckle and Gloria for the record.
I thought Officer Buckle was what I had in my mind, but I wasn't sure if it was right.
I think that's right.
I'm a librarian.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Oh, you should have done. I was trying to Google it. I came up with the story of Boo. I don't know.
It's a really great...
It's a fabulous story.
And the dog is doing all the imitations of Officer Buckle when he's on the stage.
Oh, that's funny.
It's really cute. I remember it fondly.
There you go.
I remember it yesterday. Anyway, so I know we have an opening now or coming up, I don't know. Has Nancy Hogan left?
Nancy Hogan is retiring after more than 15 years as the head of circulation services for the town of Westwood's Public Library, and she will be sorely missed. Fabulous resource, wonderful, wonderful colleague. But she's retiring to pursue more reading and travel. And, you know, we wish her all the best. Her last day is September 30th. So, we have a position opening of the head of circulation services that we'd like respectfully to request be filled, posted and filled.
Is there only one person who handles circulation services, or is it multiple people?
She's a department head. She was recently reclassified a year and a half ago as a department head. She has a department of approximately seven...
Yes.
People, so...
I was going to say, I thought from a functionality, there were more. And is there somebody that's at the Islington branch that's also a circulation?
Circulation, Islington handles circulation as part of all of its functionality, so they're more readers advisory and circulation and children's and adult programming. They kind of do it all exactly.
Got it. Questions?
Is there an opportunity for someone to advance up?
It will be posted if there's somebody in house who'd like to be considered. Of course, we would be happy to have all resumes.
Motion?
I move that we authorize the town administrator to work with the Human Resources Department and the library director to post and fill a position of head of circulation services of the Westwood Public Library.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. I'm sorry you have to wait here all night long.
That's okay. It was actually very interesting to hear.
Andy gave us the name of the book.
I didn't even have to Google it. I was at Children's Library.
Thank you for your patience.
So, it was worthwhile financing, too.
Patricia will be back to do her own.
Yes.
You got to take notes, mental notes, anyway. So, the other position we're talking about tonight is within the recreation department. So, Mike Griffin, who was here at a meeting not too long ago.
Last meeting.
Has resigned and left the town, and that has created potential opportunity here. So, why don't you share current thinking on this?
So, you know, as we do with any vacancy, sort of reevaluate and say, is there, you know, should we be filling this job? Should we be rethinking how we do it? And we're just taking that opportunity with this particular job to say, all right, is there a different way of structuring the recreation department? So, I've met with the director a couple of times, meeting, I've met with the entire department. Actually, we're meeting again tomorrow, so we don't actually have the finalized job description yet, but when we, when we do have it, we really want to move quickly. So, I'm wondering if there is some way that we can, you know, have you, give us the green light to move forward, and then through my communicating with you, once we get our recommendation, somehow figure out how to move quickly. We have Westwood Day coming fast and furious.
Well, you're not going to have somebody in place for that.
Well, we're trying to figure out, you know, contingency plans.
Yeah, I was going to say, don't you want to hire somebody part-time to plug in?
Oh, yes, that's definitely, you know, in the works, we need to find someone that has got some good experience, that can jump in and help with that. So, we just wanted to put out there, you know, at first, I said, well, we're not ready to go with it, so we're not going to come before the board. So, I just wanted to sort of share with you where we're, what our thinking is.
When do you have, and how much do you involve the rec commission in something like this?
It could be that I'll learn that the director has involved the rec commission already when we meet tomorrow. She may well have. I know that was on the list. I don't know whether it's actually happened yet or not. She's been in touch with the chair of the commission. I know whether they've actually, you know, come up with a potential job description. We're just sort of thinking about rethinking, you know, how the department could be structured, possibly give some people some growth opportunities in the department. Think about really, you know, how do we build?
It's been a while since we've had an opening.
14 years, apparently.
Yeah. So, I don't, you know, I mean, I just, you know, obviously, we need your approval on a finalized job description. I'm not suggesting, just trust us, we're going to go do something. You know, we would definitely come back, but I'm not sure whether, I was, I'd like to think we'll have a job description done before your next meeting.
But is there, is there a possibility, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, but is there a possibility that it'll be a higher-rated job?
I suppose that that would be a possibility. And I, when I, I'm not, you know, we're ruling anything out at this point, you know?
I mean, can you send out an email to us? Yeah, sure, I would certainly. Because I don't want to hold you up. But I also hate to have us vote on something with no definition. You know what I mean? If you were to commit to me that it would be equal or lower, I think that'd be one thing, but I think if it's going to be higher, we'd want...
It's not likely to be higher. I don't know.
I, you know, I've got, we don't usually have something coming to us in this kind of review thing.
Unfortunately, this is the one time our summer, we're going to meet two weeks from tonight.
Well, but the thing is, I mean, I just, this position does touch the kids, and the programming is going to start very soon. So, I also don't want to be a impediment to time. So, I guess, could the compromise be, they give you some definition and you get an opinion from us?
Well, that's definitely, that's kind of what I'm proposing here, you know, to, you know, it wasn't that we just trust us, we'll go and do it. It was more to say, you know, if we get it done, and we may not, but if we get it done, I'd like to hope to get it done sooner.
Well, I guess it's really a process.
What are the channels for what you get done? Yeah. You know, I think you're doing the right review than the department is, and I, you might can communicate to us and we can figure out what we can potentially, you know, say, keep it going and we'll approve it on...
On a temporary basis.
24th or something, but I...
At least get the job.
I think we have to know more before we can know that that's what we're going to do.
I think by the next meeting, we have to have something then because then there's a long gap and...
I would hope by the next meeting, you'd have something posted.
That's what we need to post.
Yeah.
Right.
So, why don't, why don't we leave it at this? I'll email with you if we have something more firm and ask you for an opinion that you can confirm at your next meeting, or we just leave it to the next meeting if you propose.
I think that's what we need to do.
It was really more just to update you on your...
Yep. You know, I think it's really good to take a hard look at it and be creative and look at, I don't know to the extent that there are comparable other communities or the way things are structured to get information from it. You get that information. You know, as it's been so long and in part, people grew into jobs, you know, it's, you don't have this opportunity very often, so you want to do it right.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Again, your patience, Patricia, that's great. Okay.
Next, ladies.
We've got those preliminary discussion of fall town meeting. So, Mike, thank you. You've been asking people to give feedback on their thoughts on fall town meeting. So far, it looks like there isn't a lot of groundswell.
Everybody would love to hear the knock going out when it's...
I felt really interesting in the charter how it says, "The Board of Selectmen, at its discretion, can cancel the fall annual town meeting," and the timing. And then, it says, "So long as no more than 10 petitioned articles have been submitted for inclusion on the warrant." So, it sounds like we need to open the warrant for a fall town meeting and be prepared to close it and find out what happens. I mean, we can't just say, people come tell us that they have warrant articles without actually opening the warrant.
Is that correct?
Yeah. So, we haven't, we haven't...
We haven't quite done it this way, though.
But we haven't decided to opt out since the charter was put in place. And right now, what we're dealing with is none of the department heads, and have you reached the school department?
I have.
And they, so, nobody's saying they need this town meeting and the timing of it to get something done. So, now we default to something we hadn't looked at before, and that is...
A petition article doesn't necessarily come from department heads.
It doesn't, no. So, there's the other category from, from the public, and we have to give them a chance.
Have to give them a...
So, can we, make sure we put it on our next agenda to open town?
You can open it right now.
Yeah, you can open it right now.
We both open and we put a post on the town website.
Yeah, we don't have to notify them first.
Is there a timeline and has it meant to be open?
Close at our September meeting.
The discretion of the board.
I theoretically consider the folder for the next town meeting open at all times and...
Theoretically, and I'm just saying procedurally.
Theoretically, anybody wants to submit an article, I always ask department heads, "Do you have anything out there? Just send it along."
Practically speaking?
Because...
We don't get many petition articles. Why should we get them for this?
We have, September 12th is our meeting. We could close it.
Exactly, so...
Give them a little over a month.
And so, we'll know going into the 12th if we have anywhere approaching petition articles.
So, I guess when we say we're formally opening, that's a notice to the, what we're going to do from this.
Yeah, we're formally opening the warrant for any submissions that might be considered at a potential fall town meeting. I think you'd leave it at a...
What's the deadline, September 12th?
Clearly indicate that you might not...
With the deadline of September 12th.
September 12th would be the deadline or close the warrant.
And this is what we would do normally in December, the annual town meeting. We open it in December and close it in early January. So, as Mike said, he's got a folder So as Mike said, he's got a folder at all times. Somebody may inquire and say, when the next one comes up, I want a petition article. And it's historically, not totally, but we don't have a lot of petition articles. There was one special town meeting one year where we had a boatload submitted. We didn't have this provision. This is different. And this was meant to give us flexibility that we don't want to go through the process of having a town meeting and the expense of it if petition articles could wait, let's say, until the spring. Again, we're talking about something that might not happen.
Even then, I think the boatload was only six articles. I don't think it got to 10.
So should we make a motion then?
That's what we should do. We need a motion to open the warrant for a potential fall annual town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Do we need to put a potential closing date?
Closing day on September 12th.
Amend that?
Yeah, I'll amend it to open the town, the town warrant for a potential fall meeting to be held in November. The warrant to close at our meeting on September 12th if we receive the required article, number of articles to go forward at the town meeting.
You don't need.
So to close on September 12th.
The opening and the closing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Okay, so that motion will set the wheels in motion. And we'll, we'll just be sure we're doing it correctly and consistently with the charter. Old business, I think we've heard about the turf field.
Yes.
And we're happy to know that that went so well. The lot at the Handland School, Mike, I don't think Todd really touched on that. Is there anything you want to tell us?
Oh, we just got some pictures of the turf field.
Just keep going, yeah.
When this, when the documents is an agreement on the final design and contract.
It'd be great if the camera can pick up on that.
Is there dispute over?
You want me to?
I just saw something that.
What did you ask?
Is there dispute? It looks like they agreed on certain things. I'm wondering if they dispute over.
No, it's not.
No, it's not over.
So they're still fighting over ownership.
Actually dispersed and then sent back, remade and back.
Wow.
Okay, so right now, let's talk about the field.
So the field's pretty much done. It's talked, talked about the track needs to be resurfaced. As he said, they're tied up in MIT. So depending on whether or not they can get in in time to get it done before the opening of school or the end of August, we'll have them do that now or wait till this week till next.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. We still hope the timing would be to get it all done at once.
So Mike, I think when Todd talked to us, he said the technology has come so far since the last time we did it.
Right.
Does that increase the life expectancy of the turf at all? In other words, I think last time was maybe 10, eight to 10. With technology, we now maybe 10 to 12 or we're still at the 10?
We're still at the 10. That's what he tells me. But the quality is way better.
It looks fabulous.
It looks great.
It's high rose. Yeah.
Thicker.
It does have a lot more bumps.
Since my son is playing football, the height's gone very exact.
This is, this is the parking lot. We had to do the turnaround. So you see the turnaround in that corner. That got done. That was done with money's, luckily, because we didn't, we didn't have much money left over from the appropriation. But we had a fortunate situation where the state did some work on Juniper Road. Juniper Road was to be paid for by Dedham West of Water District. Dedham West of the Water District gave us the money and here's where the money got spent.
Yeah, that's great. Cooperation.
Cooperation all the way around. And here's the building going up and every day you go down there and you see progress being made.
It's amazing.
Does they have a date, like a potential date?
They're hoping that sometime by the end of September, early October.
Really?
Yeah.
That's fabulous.
They've been moving right along. Washington Street and E Street, Washington Street and E Street. This is, Washington Street was owned by the state, I'll tell you the history. Owned by the state. The town accepted, the total state, we will accept responsibility for plowing and maintenance of Washington Street. If you redesign it and reconstruct it to our specification, and they did. They spent, I think it was, one saying, I'm missing, $4 million at the time. It was a lot of money. We had done a cost analysis and basically says, you know, the annual costs of plowing, sanding and all the stuff we have to do plus to make the annual, the maintenance that we'd have to provide like this, 17 years later, it was still cost effective for us to do that. But by doing this new process that Todd has come up with, that's being used, where they grind it up, remelt and then reapply with some new oil mixed in, a new surface. It's the old surface being redone to do a new surface. A very cost effective procedure. And last night and tonight, they're doing a final element, which is top, top going down. It's been a wonderful process. If you look at the quality, it's almost like it's been re-surfaced.
Now, do they do, there's a machine right there on the site that's kind of doing it at the same time?
At the same time.
That's amazing.
It's like this train.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah. Thank you.
So by station two, the roofers are installing the waterproof membrane here. This is all recent stuff. This is the concrete topping of the slab on the second floor. This is the rough installation of the mechanical room. This is the safety netting. There's a pole for the safety netting for the home run on the soft golf field. This is communications tower being worked on.
Do you know, Mike, is that, is that going to have a lightning rod at the top of it? I was looking at that today because it seems that, there seems to be something that's going to go on top of that. I just didn't know.
It might be an antenna, though.
Antenna?
It might, it might be a lightning rod antenna.
Might be the highest point.
The antenna is located, the communication antenna is located.
So I went by it today and it's, the brick around the bays is yellow. Is that a treatment? It's being painted.
It can't be flayed over.
No, no, I just was wondering where.
Might be a waterproof ferry. Sometimes they do waterproof ferry.
That's what I was thinking, something along those lines.
Yeah, see how the top, like, looks like something's still going to go up on top of it?
It does look like there's a place.
I just looked at it on my way over, so.
Anyway, good progress is being made.
But it's two months behind?
Good progress is being made.
Yeah, it's still about two months behind, but it's moving forward. This is, the fuel tank has been removed. This is.
They're starting to pour foundations this weekend.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, they've.
Yeah, they're out there.
Some walls are put.
The walls.
Foundation walls.
This is a preparer, preparing, that's the foundation.
Yeah, there it is.
This is all rebound. Doors and controllers open and installed. And Deerfield Avenue extension.
Oh, still there.
Pretty much complete. If you can see the white poles that still yet to be put on that come. Today, we painted in all of the parking spaces. Small from Deerfield School, South Side.
Look at that.
And Allegiant Parking, they had parking the way they should be. Remember, it was all over, helped us filter. You couldn't get, some days you couldn't get through. If an emergency vehicle, some days that had to go through this parking lot, they could have never made it. Now, it's, it's a lot more parking.
Is there any way to get somebody to do an aerial of this pretty soon or is anybody taking any aerials?
We can see what we can.
See who's got that drone, but I think we're in a no drone zone, you know that?
Well, I was more thinking that. I know the university station was taking aerials regularly. I don't know how they get it done. And maybe it's, maybe it's a cost item that we can't do. But it'd be really great to show the imagery of the design and then the reality. It'd be nice to have that to share with the public.
And here's highlighted.
The new poles in.
The poles in. I just got to get everything moved. So now we've got to get everything moved. We made a, we were out there the other day. Everybody's got their schedule. Instead of Horizon moving to the pole, which would have taken some extra time, Horizon has decided to tunnel back its line and rise up on this pole over here. So they don't have to get to that pole. They're going to go underground right away. And then everybody else is going to move over. So the electric company's going, Electric Eversource is going to move over next. And fire needs to move over. Comcast has truncated their service on another pole, so there's only two things need.
They came up with a solution.
They came up with a solution and that pole should be removed by August 26th, I think is the date we set.
I think it's Tuesday, not the 31st.
No kidding. So we, I basically, I don't, I hope you don't mind, but I basically told all the utilities that if they didn't accomplish that by that time, I would not want to be them appearing before the board of selectmen.
You had our authority to do that.
We gave you plenty of authority to do that.
I delivered the.
No, I mean, it was definitely that important and it's great that you brought them together.
And they, they all came up to a meeting here. I think the meeting on site was very beneficial. They got the pole. I mean, that pole probably would have been a month away.
But you know what? That's what had to be done, so that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, now here comes the fun.
Well, this is easy.
So the way I look at this, I thought we should start in December and work backwards.
I want to depend if we have the fall town meeting.
Confusion in October.
You know what I mean? We have to depend if the.
No, there's not going to be a fall town meeting. We have to go through the process, but there won't be one. And here are the issues. We have a meeting on the 26th of September, Columbus Day. And then the day after is the beginning of Jewish holiday, so the Tuesday night and the Wednesday night. So, you know, if we go every two weeks, that week is really shot, the week of Columbus Day. If we go to the next week, the 17th, my question is, three weeks apart from the prior meeting at that time of year, is that okay? Because then if you go to the end of the month, Halloween is on a Monday night.
So what if we go to the 3rd and the 17th and just do two back-to-back, the 26th and the 3rd?
I think that might be too many meetings.
We could always cancel it if we need to, you know what I mean? We have in the past.
Well, 26th, I'm not even going to be here, just so you know, that's my, you know, I don't think I'm going to be there.
Do we have anything scheduled for the 26th yet?
Not at this time.
Why not go to, I've opened the 3rd and cancel the 26th? And do the 17th? Because that solves those problems. And then we have, we run into our next problem, which for me, the 7th, I have a work obligation that will take me into the early part of the evening. So I'm wondering, can we last until the 14th, the 24th to the, no, the 17th to the 14th? That's a month. That's almost too long.
Well, if you tie it, if you tie it to the 7th, we could go on Tuesday, Wednesday if we have to.
Well, Tuesday's election day.
Oh, that's right.
So that's a problem. So if we do the 7th, I may need somebody else to start the meeting. Depends on how things are going. So, and then we'll go to the 28th?
Can we not do the 28th? You know what? That school is off. Are they doing that? We're always off the Monday after Thanksgiving.
I thought they gave that up.
They eliminated that.
I think, didn't they give that up for election day?
Election Day and Veterans Day. But we, I mean, why not the 21st?
Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, Nancy usually has company.
Oh, okay.
Well, thank you for remembering the best bear of a week.
How's that? See, I do remember Nancy. I pay attention to this, Mike. What do you think?
I don't know.
You know the difference between in-laws and outlaws? Outlaws are wanted.
I did not say.
That's all right. I tell my mother-in-law that all the time.
No, it's usually just, but the 28th is my husband's birthday, but whatever.
It's the day after my birthday. But I'll still be here.
It's the day before my birthday.
Go with it.
Wow. Good times.
It's not, it's not late enough. Keep going.
My in-law's birthday. Let's go for a drink.
So let's do the 28th and then December 11th.
You think that?
December usually gets quiet, so we'd have the 4th, the 7th, the 28th, December 11th. Seems all right, Mike?
Yeah, seems all right.
If you didn't do another one in December, you won't have one for almost a full month. I know I don't have January on here, but January 1st will be that Monday, so just.
Yeah, that's okay.
Do you want to? I mean, do you want to? It's probably too long if we went to the 4th and the 18th.
I, the week of January 1st, maybe we'd have to go.
A Tuesday or Wednesday?
A Tuesday or Wednesday. That's around the time that we're closing the warrant.
Yeah, we'd probably just do an open the annual town meeting on the, what, November 28th? Open the warrant and then close it the first meeting in January. That's okay.
And then come January, we're starting to deal with the overlap of the finance commission schedule. I'm wondering if when we post or when we have something on the town website about the special town meeting warrant being opened, that we have a notation that says, you know, we anticipate the annual town meeting warrant to open on November 28th.
November 28th.
Just as a. Just a schedule, a schedule of dates.
Think about that, you know. All right? So if you can feed that back to us in an email, Christine?
Yep.
All right, can I just, can I just be a complication here? I'm just looking at the 28th, that's Monday. Maybe do it on the Tuesday? I'm just wondering. After relatives leave or come back from relatives.
Oh, I think the hard part is you guys getting.
Pack it out.
Packages out, right.
Yeah, but we still wouldn't get them on the 28th. We'd still need them beforehand.
You'd get them on the 23rd.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, so let's back to the problem we had before.
Even if you had the meeting on the 29th, we'd still get them on the 23rd.
Right.
You're probably going to start getting them.
Yeah, you're going to be getting them on Thursday nights.
I was trying to get the package out. She went out to classes on Friday.
Really? You going to that program? Good for you.
I mean, did you want to go to the 30th and then you don't have to worry about it?
No.
No, the Wednesdays?
Then that starts.
You'd still get the package on the 23rd.
You obviously don't want the 28th. I really don't either, but let's just go with it and we can see what happens as we get closer.
Okay.
See how the fall's going with meetings, materials.
Yeah, only because I'm just thinking, sometimes try to take the kids on a short vacation.
Why don't you chuck into that? Let's just hold it for now and we can revisit it at the next meeting. Okay, minutes, let's just try to get them wrapped up and any comments on the minutes from July 11th?
I have a motion to approve the minutes as written for July 11th, 2016.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. Mike, please thank everybody who made their presentations tonight. I know they put a lot of work into it and their dedication to what they do is very apparent. And thank you to you as well. While some of it is the day-to-day grind that they feel, it's really a nice opportunity to have that shared with us.
Yeah.
And.
I think they get it much better.
Well, yeah.
Preparing it and also sharing it presents some satisfaction.
Yeah, so please thank them and, you know, I know it makes for a later evening, but it's well done and.
We only do it every couple of years anyway. Only time we get a new selectman is when we do it.
And I, it was said earlier and I want to repeat it, Christine and Catherine did a marvelous job.
Thank you very much.
The organization charts and the organization of the thing, editing it down and.
It helps frame the conversation for budget season, too, which is good. You'll give something.
No, no, I'm just so excited that the mail's text, you're going in the right direction.
As it should. Okay, any questions from the press? No questions. Public, no questions.
Did you want to do an aid to the elderly appointment? I forgot to print it. You don't have to. It's not, they're not meeting anytime soon.
Can we do that, Pat, Pat's appointment to the aid to the elderly? Was it for Dennis? An adjutant?
Yeah, you still, they're not in session.
Yeah, I know we are, it's just.
They're not, there's nothing urgent going on with the aid to the elderly.
Well, we've talked about it before, so.
I know you have. He's confirmed. He knows he confirmed.
We're not surprised.
Is he watching?
Motion to appoint Mr. Patrick Behren to the aid to the elderly.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. For the record, nobody opposed it. Okay, motion to adjourn? Our next meeting will be on Monday, August 24th, here at the Sportsman's Meeting Room at Town Hall. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you.
Thank you.